All right, good evening. Let's call the September 16th, 2020 Board of Education meeting to order. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you happen to be somewhere where there's a flag nearby, if you would join me in standing, that would be great. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of its own bounds. All right, thank you. I'd like to do a quick roll call. I want to see if Mr. Middlestat, the Secretary, is online somewhere. Have you seen him, Tim, anywhere?
Not under his name unless he's under something else. I don't know if he can, if he is online, maybe he can text somebody and let them know his name or...
Okay, since we're not hearing from the Secretary, Mr. Middlestat, Ms. Burkmeyer, would you mind sitting in for this meeting until perhaps Mr. Middlestat can, will be able to join us?
Sure.
So if you could take the role, please.
Mr. Daru.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Burkmeyer here. Ms. DeWitt.
Here.
And Ms. Hendershot.
Here.
One more try for Mr. Middlestat? All right, hearing that he's not available, I would like to, we've made a little bit of an adjustment to the agenda for today. Normally, we will go straight into the open forum. However, for today's meeting, we will be moving into towards the greater student achievement. And we're going to begin by looking at the options to return to in-person learning. And from there, I will turn it over to Superintendent Woodside.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we'll start out with, can we put up the, I think we started with the information from Macomb County? I don't know if Tim or Anita's doing it. Thank you. You can go to the next. What we wanted to do, what we wanted to do is kind of show, this is from the Macomb County Health Department, and what you see, you can see each month, and it shows, you know, the COVID testing for each month, and you could see as, at the peak of it, when we were hitting June and July, and then even in August, we, the number of tests had increased. In August, the percent of positive tests were about 7% or better. And now in September, those positive tests are going down, we're at 5.9%. I think it may be a little lower than that. This, this is from at least September 7th. So I wanted to share with the board the direction of, you know, how the COVID testing's doing, how's it doing in Macomb County? And you can go to the next slide. I probably should have blown it up a little more, but when you look across that slide, that's again from the Macomb County. When you look at that slide, you know, the, the townships and cities that are part of the Anchor Bay School District, across the top, it starts in March and goes all the way to September. So you can see in August, you know, a pretty good ride, you know, spike or rise in this area. And then you can see the drop as we go into September, as we go forward. So I think the board can take that information into account. And again, the Macomb County Health Department website is a good resource to get an idea of how your area is doing. They break it down, you know, by township and city. So we can go to the next. Oh, I like that picture. Is that pool side or?
So there's only three slides.
No, the next one is the safety measures.
Oh, you went to next.
You went to next.
Safety measures?
Yep.
Okay. What I wanted to do also is, is, you know, when we get into these different options for the board to review and take in, I wanted to talk about the safety measures. The safety measures we talked about in the past, they were part of our Return to Learn and the roadmap. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to assure, you know, those out there, our students and parents and staff, the measures that we're taking to ensure that we're doing everything we can to make sure when I, we do decide for our students to come back, that we're taking all the necessary precautions we can. All right, thank you. All right, so for transportation, again, we talked about this before, but I just want to quickly go over, you know, transportation, you know, when students arrive to get on the bus, there will be the hand sanitizers, the students sanitize their hands. We'll also have masks. If any student does not have a mask, we're going to make those available. The buses are going to be sanitized each day, and they're going to be sanitized between the bus runs. And students get on wherever possible, we will have them social distanced. But in some instances, that's not going to be, that's not going to be possible. And that is part of the reason why, you know, the governor's plan is for students to be wearing masks. The next slide is elementary. So, all right, you ride at the elementary school, and we will have masks for all the students and making sure that they do have face covering available. We will have hand sanitizers stationed at the entrance as the students come in. Obviously, it will have use of the bathrooms and the sinks and that are in the classroom. Classroom desk at the elementary are sanitized every four hours. Custodians and staff will continue to, to disinfect the high-use areas, doorknobs, things like that throughout the day. And then the student classrooms will be clean and disinfected at the end of each day. Facility use permits have been suspended, and we talked about that. And I believe Curriculum and Finance Committee that at this time, we're not allowing public use of the facilities. And I think you would, you would find that across the county. And that's to ensure the safety of the students. And that, you know, on that subject, the board, you know, each month or every couple of months, the board can reevaluate that, depending on how things go going forward. So the school arrival for our secondary students. Again, we're going to have masks for the students for any student doesn't have one. We will have hand sanitizer at the entrance of the schools. Bathrooms will be open for student use. Custodial staff will continue to disinfect the high-use areas. We've installed protective barriers and student desks to create a separation between students and the technology labs. Classrooms are going to be disinfected each day. And again, this facility use for our secondary buildings, we're not allowing public use of the secondary buildings also. That's to give us an opportunity to sanitize those buildings each day. You know, district-wide, we have these safety shields. If you've had a chance to visit any of the schools, you can see, as you go in, there's the plexiglass safety shields as you go in. We also have that for our computer labs. We have signage. You kind of see when you came into middle school north today, you can see that we've got signage up. We've got dividers in the hallways, a line for students to go one direction on one side and another direction on the other. We will, you know, we do have a process in place for the health screening, and we'll be doing additional, you know, cleaning throughout the district and all the buildings. And we have, you know, we have a pretty good supply of the face masks to make sure that, that students can comply and have those. The back-to-school learning options. I like the screensavers. All right, you can go to the intro, Tim.
May I ask a question?
Yes, certainly.
I didn't hear any talk about taking temperatures.
That is, you know, the temperature taking is done before or done at their homes. There's a process in place for students to, you know, check, you know, check all the, you know, symptoms that the Health Department has provided us before they even get on the bus.
Okay, so the parents are responsible for doing that and making sure that the, those precautions are taken before they get there?
Yeah, you would find that to be the safe throughout the county.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, I just, I'm asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so what we're going to, you know, what we're going to cover today is, you know, we're going to return, do the Return to Learn Plan and explain the pros and cons of each. I think, I think it's really important, as we've talked in previous board meetings, you know, we will share with the, with our parents so they can make the decision. Ultimately, once the board makes a decision in the direction we're going to go, they're going to see the pros and cons, the things that we're able to do and the things that we're not able to do. I know when we've got questions about when the students return, both be face-to-face. And I think we've seen in the news some districts have done that also. Part of the roadmap does not include, does not include the social distancing for the classrooms and hallways, but it does include, or the mask. So we're going to take all the necessary safety precautions, you know, whatever the decision of the board and when, when that face-to-face, when that does arrive, we are going to take all the necessary precautions to make sure that students are safe and staff are safe and, you know, cleaning those high-use areas and, and, you know, as we go forward. Plans are intended to address the areas of social distancing, cleaning, safety. Plans include a hybrid option, you know, which have half face-to-face one day, then another half of the students come, come the next day. Some plans include a progression of a daily time or adjusting daily the in-person schedule to provide additional time for teachers to plan and connect with virtual students. So some of these plans are going to be, you know, half the students coming, you know, every other day. Some of the plans have students getting out an hour early. And you'll see a lot of these plans are similar to what is going on throughout the state.
Mr. Woodside, before you get into your presentation, I know a lot of parents are at home possibly getting ready to screenshot a bunch of data coming by. We'll just be readily available on the district's website tomorrow.
Yeah, this PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's, yeah, we will do that. I know, Patrick, we had talked, what we, what we were hoping is that we could go over these options. The board could review it, digest it. And then I know we have a board meeting next week on the 23rd. And at that time, if the board, you know, the board could have enough time to review it and make a decision then. Because that's what we had hoped, and I just want to share that with the other board members, that we could review today, take in that information, and then we will be back next week.
Correct, that's my understanding of what you're saying.
Okay. All the plans, you know, we do get input from staff and, and we take that input. We're making adjustments for the plans daily. The total virtual option will always be available, you know, for those families that, hey, you know, we are not coming back for the semester. We're not coming back for the year, so we have those options. Go to the next one, it's the overview. So again, I want to share, and we have a summary of this at the end as, you know, for the board to see when they start talking about these different options. The elementary options, you do have, you know, half the student, we're calling that the hybrid, being half the students every other day. We have an option where it's half the students every, every other day. Then we have a remote day, you know, where the students would not report, but that remote day each week would be the virtual remote learning. This is elementary. The elementary have the hybrid progression, where we would have our young fives, kindergarten students come in for a day in advance or two. Then we would slowly bring in the first and second grade, third and fourth, and we progress that over a week or two in bringing the students back. Then we have what we discussed before at the previous meetings, face-to-face or virtual, where all students would have the opportunity to return. And then you also have those that did not, could still continue, you know, the option virtual. In the secondary options, again, we have quite a few options to discuss. You know, you know, all six hours hybrid, again, that's, you know, the every other day the students can come in. So you'd have half the students. Then we do have another day where it's half the students, and that's one day a week where they would have off. We have a hybrid block schedule, which gives time for, you know, the teachers with office hours. Then we have a hybrid schedule with remote, a hybrid block schedule, and then a block schedule. And then lastly, a face-to-face or, and virtual. So again, that is one of the options that we discussed in the past at previous board meetings, that the students would have the opportunity, families would have the opportunity to be face-to-face. Those that did not want to, also in the secondary as an elementary, they could stay out for the semester or, or the year. I have, you can go to the next slide. On the elementary, Terry, I'd like you to go through each of these options for the elementary grades.
Your bet. Yeah, good evening, board. I'm going to introduce the four options pertaining to the elementary return back to building plan. Mr. Woodside already went through each one a little bit, just highlighting the four that we're going to choose and talk about for your choice. And like he mentioned earlier, we have a hybrid that's meeting half of the students and every other day with an alternative Friday, and then we have a hybrid version that is every other day with half of the students and having an online Wednesday. And then hybrid progression, we'll get into that, and then also a face-to-face, returning back with full-time students. So please go to the next slide, and I'll dig into each option. So as we talked about at the beginning was, we have, we're going to bring in half of the students every other day. So this would be considered a cohort A, cohort B, every other day option. And it alternates days, allowing for smaller class sizes and social distancing within the classrooms. And then every other Friday would be, the students would be attending every other Friday. So that's the alternative, alternating. And then we do this by splitting the students into two groups. So the A group and the B group are determined by their home address and their last name. And that is so that if we have houses with multiple last names, then they're at least coming from the same address and they can attend on the same dates. So just an example, last names A through K would attend Monday, Wednesday, and every other Friday. And L through Z would attend Tuesday, Thursday, and every other Friday. And when we have students in the building, of course, at the elementary level, it's easier to do because they don't have to pass between the two, between classrooms. So where the kids would stay in the classrooms primarily. And I'll be showing you what a three-hour, a four-hour, and a full-day schedule would look like in a, in a few other slides. But I wanted to give you options for what the cohort would look like. Next slide, please. Option two is another option that only brings half of our students in at a time. The difference in this option is that it leaves Wednesdays as an online learning day. This, this is a benefit because it allows for us to clean and sanitize in the middle of the week. And then it also gives teachers time to connect with the whole class because they're not seeing the whole class throughout the week, they're just seeing them every other day. So that would allow for that. I think, I think it's a great day to make sure we're connecting with all the students. And if they have questions, that would be a great day to, to have that. And when you're seeing week one and week two, of course, that is, these are all flexible. We can work around, you know, if we wanted to extend that out, but we wanted to give just a week, a week glance. And then we would look at it possibly for week two that we're bringing the students back in for a full-day schedule. This is to ease, ease students back into buildings. Option three for elementary. This brings students back to buildings in a progression. And so it's not a traditional A-B day, but it's adding our youngest students first. And I know we talked about that at a board meeting a couple of months ago, really discussing how important it is for young students to get in front of teachers and to be, not be in front of the screens as much. And it's harder for young students to sit still in front of computers, and we really need to get them into the buildings first. So we really focused on that, on this one, where week one, we're gradually introducing students back into the buildings, starting with young fives in kindergarten. This is a sample. It could be a little bit varying. We could extend it a little bit farther out, but I just thought this would show you an example of, Monday, you would bring in young fives kindergarten, then on Tuesday, you would add first and second grade. Wednesday, we could add third and fourth grade. Thursday would add fifth grade. And then everyone would be in on a Friday. Of course, these are flexible. We could work and change this. But these are just examples and samples of what the options would look like. And then week two, we would bring them back in full day. So there would just be an introduction to the building. So that is option three. Option four is our traditional face-to-face model that was presented on August 11th, which brings all students back, and we would still continue offering virtual to families that want to continue virtual. So the, so this is the traditional face-to-face scenario. And Anchor Bay teachers are delivering the instruction to all the students. And of course, nothing compares to having a teacher face-to-face with you. And that, that, that's when our students benefit the most from, from their learning. And then an early release should be added to our normal schedules to provide time for teachers to connect with the virtual students. So that's an important piece when we're, and we'll be looking at that in a minute as far as the layout of the day. So we just want to make sure that that's, that's an important piece, that we want to make sure that we're supporting the teachers that are connecting with those virtual students. And of course, families that are choosing the in-person, we have to make sure that we're understanding that masks are going to be required. We have to make sure that we're washing hands and taking time for the hand sanitizer that are going to be available all over the buildings and that we're social distancing as much as possible. So that is option four. Next, I'm going to talk about the, the examples for elementary schedules and what a day looks like during a three-hour, and this is a sample schedule. So just keep that in mind, that this is, this can be altered, we can change these. What it, what it would look like is students would arrive at 8:30. We'd give them time to get to the classrooms by 8:45. We have school announcements that are normal, 8:45 to 9:15. We would have that half-hour time for the class to meet. That's when you, at the elementary level, it's a big deal to have, have lunch and to choose your lunch. So that's always a big deal. And we want to make sure that we're taking attendance during that time. And then it's time for the teacher to talk about the day and to lay out what's expected. The nine, 9:15 to 10:30 would be math time. And that's when we have that face-to-face instruction. We also would have small group and then independent assignments that would be assigned to the students at the time. 10:30 to 10:45 would be a break to get up and move around because that's a long time for the students to sit and do a math assignment or during that math time. So we want to give them a little bit of a break and then come back at 10:40 to 11:30. And this is the time we have language arts reading, where they're focusing on the phonics and word study, and they're integrating the science and social studies into the lessons. That is also face-to-face, small group assignments and learning, and then independent time for the students to work on, on what they would need to, whatever was assigned from the teacher. And then the, the day would end right after that at 11:30. Again, this is a three-hour sampling. So the, the students would leave at 11:30, and then they would be able to log in when they get home to their special time that the special teachers would be delivering, and then the students could pick up at home. And any other assignments that would be assigned in school. So the, the important piece here is that from 11:30 to 3:30, that gives time for the teachers to do their prep. So that allows four hours of prep time per day. The average time for a teacher would be about 53 minutes per day. And this would allow four hours of prep. So that's supporting that they have to, you know, check in with their, their virtual students also. And this also, of course, provide cleaning time. That's always important to make sure that we're cleaning up after the students would leave and getting ready for the next day. So again, this is a sample of a three-hour day. The next one is a four-hour day. And this is the same schedule. The only addition to the schedule would be that from 11:45 to 12:15, we're just making sure that we're squeezing in that language arts time that includes writing. And we want to make sure that we're, you know, this is the time where we can really integrate that science and social studies time. And so that, that would be that addition to the schedule. And again, if you look at the end of the day, the four-hour day gives teachers three hours of prep. Their average is 53 minutes, and then this allows an additional three hours of prep to connect with those students. And then it also gives building time to sanitize the, the classrooms. So again, this is a four-hour day, just adding that language arts and writing to it. The next would be a full-day sampling. And this is, basically, it's extending more of the time for math, reading, and language arts writing. And then the students would be coming in at 8:30 in the morning, and then they, we, they would be dismissed at 2:15. The other addition to this is having lunch, where the other two days would not include lunch. This one is, includes lunch from 11:45 to 12:15. And then students would be dismissed at 2:15. So from 2:15 to 3 o'clock, that gives teachers two hours and 20 minutes for prep per day. Again, their average is 53 minutes per day. And then that would give them that two hours, 20 minutes to prep. And then it would also allow the buildings to be sanitized. So just like we talked about at the very beginning, we want to make sure that we try to give the prep time at the end of the day instead of trying, trying to squeeze it in and chop up the day. So we want to make sure that, that, that special time is at the end, and then we're giving that extra time for prep and cleaning of the building. And of course, this is a sample of, of a day. We started with 8:30, but we know that the buildings, early buildings start at 8:41 to 3:32 normally. And a late building would start at 9:11 to 4:02. So, but just to give you a sample of the day. And again, all of these choices are flexible. We can adjust times. We could, and we could also look at the option for the hybrids. Those are also flexible. These are just to give the options and give ideas of what we could, what we could do for students and teachers. Yes, I can barely hear you, though.
So with these options, the virtual, the students that choose to remain virtual, would that eliminate any face-to-face time with those students? I mean, like with the full-day schedule, like what would be the expectation for teachers, you know, to, to be servicing both groups?
The teachers would, the teachers would still have to do, they would record their time for, for the subject area, and then that would be provided to the virtual students when they want to pick it up.
Okay, so, but in comparison to like what we're doing right now at the elementary level, you know, with live interaction that uses throughout the day, that would end for, well, potentially with the full schedule.
For the virtual, yes.
Okay. So those would all just become pre-reported? If it was holding?
Okay, that, I'm going to hand it off to Joe to talk about secondary.
Hey, before we, before we hand it off, Terry,
Hey, before we, before we hand it off, Terry and Joe, I apologize for interrupting. Maybe we break this into a little bit of, uh, in two different parts and take on the elementary and take on the secondary. With board questions before we move on while expression or what is mine. Um, and we're not looking at thirty slides and trying to go back and forth and jump in between two of you. So I guess my thought process is if we want to turn it over to the board. Um, and see if the board has any questions before we move on to secondary piece. Uh, obviously, there may be some questions that they may have that the answer in the secondary piece, but. Um, I digest things in smaller pieces, so. Um, my preference would be if the board has something they want to talk about. As this Kirk Meyer did, that we, we cover that in the elementary section now. Uh, so with that being said, why don't we start with? Um, Mr. Mr. Witt, I, I see you out there, um, is there anything that you would like to talk about? Hang on a minute, you're muted.
Okay, you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, on the full day sample schedule. Um, it says one ten to two fifteen student dismissal. Is that giving kids time to get home? Is that so that they can do the virtual special at home?
They dismiss at two fifteen?
No, it says one ten, language arts ends at one ten. And it says one ten to two fifteen is student dismissal.
Anita, can you go back to that slide? Cause I think, um, Marie, that was updated since your packet.
Oh.
So, sorry about that, but yeah, they would dismiss at two fifteen.
So the language arts block would be till two fifteen?
Yes, it's twelve fifteen to two fifteen for the full day.
Okay, no, that wasn't on my page here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, some of these we updated and saw some of the mistakes, so.
Okay.
Back to that, can we go back to that, um, PowerPoint though?
Yes.
Just so we can clarify that. So, yeah, if you see the PowerPoint, it says we, we fix that. Oh, I'm sorry, you know, you're right, it says one ten, it would be to two fifteen. I'm sorry, that's my mistake.
No, that's fine, I just didn't know if that, I didn't understand it.
No, I, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
It should be to, till two fifteen.
Okay, um, I got several questions. Um, on your, on the schedules presently, in a hybrid model. You have kids coming, let's say Monday and Tuesday, another half coming Wednesday and Thursday. Or let's say that, that group A comes on Monday. Group B on Wednesday, but when, or let, probably better to say Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday. Alright, so on Monday, group A comes in and they get the lessons for the day and they're in school for the day. Um, presently. Um, but in a hydro bread model, there would only be half of them, right? The rest of them are working from home. Um, if we are in a hybrid model, when, let's say you're teaching. Uh, math fractions, addition of fractions, you introduce that to, uh, group A on Monday. Um, do, are there lessons provided for group B? That cover the addition of fractions, the same material also on Monday? Or is that introduced on Tuesday to them? And if so, on those odd days when they aren't. In face to face, wh- what are they learning, I guess? I'm, I'm confused about that.
Right.
Do you understand my question?
I do, and we, we have to make sure that, you know, the information is front loaded in, in, um. Schoology, I'm sorry. And we would have to make sure that that information is there for the students before. Um, before the week so that all those students could have the same information, but I. I hear what you're saying and I know that we'd have to work through that for the students that would stay home first. That first day so that, you know, they would definitely have to have the information before. Um, they, they would come for the next day, so. We have to think through that.
Yeah, because otherwise they're only getting half the amount of curriculum.
Well, no, we wouldn't, they wouldn't be idle, you know, on those days off, they would be working through school.
Alright, so when a teacher, right now, if you had this hybrid model. And they're presenting their lessons for the day, those lessons you're saying are already com- recorded?
Currently, that's how we're doing it, yes, when they, when the students are working with the teachers currently. They are recording those, so if they can't make the live, then they can go in and get the. Recorded version in schoology whenever they can, whenever they have the time to do that.
Okay, but all of it is live, correct?
Currently, they're live, yes, they're doing twenty minute. At the elementary level, they're doing twenty minute reading, twenty minute writing and twenty minute math. And those are live, that they're connecting with students, but then. The students that cannot connect live, they can always access all of those in schoology at any time.
Okay.
So that would continue with the hybrid also.
Okay. Um, so when you're doing the hybrid model. They're actually taping the. Uh, lesson that they're actually doing and then just making it available at the time it is taped or later on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um. In the full day sample. Alright, um. Why, I'm, I'm a little confused about why we would consider a three hour day.
It's just an option and that's what we wanted to provide for the board is different options, so we have a three hour, a four hour and a full day.
And a full day?
Right.
Okay, um. What if parents choose to make your specials? Presentation? Um, because kids are done at the end of the day. Is that still going to be required class that they're supposed to be taking? They are responsible for the work that's presented or would that be optional?
No, it would be, it would be recommended that they are following through with those classes also, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm not, I mean, I mean, recommended, I mean. If we have this at the end of the day where kids are going home, expected to. Get online, do this, maybe art or gym or whatever the activity is. That receives a grade, is it a participation grade? Is it going to be graded on material that is submitted?
It would be, you're right, at that point, it would be a grade for participation, yes.
Just the fact that they go on, look at the lesson, but they wouldn't be responsible for the work. I would be concerned that by the time a student got home and off the bus and they've been at this all day. And this is the special, that. There perhaps would be. Um, a number of students who would consider that an add on, so to speak, which I'm not saying they are. But I'm saying that, um, I just wondered how it would be treated as far as a grade. And their expectation for participation.
Right.
Okay. Okay, I guess. I guess you answered all my questions, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Marie, let's move on to, um, this is activity, Hendershaw. Hang on, we'll see if we can find you, I apologize.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, first of all, Mr. Green, my last name is Mrs. Hendershaw, you don't have to throw the activity in, then I, this is my middle name, um. It's just for clarification, it's a, it's a mouthful, I know. Um, just for clarification purposes, Marie brought it up, this whole odd even. So for that, I clearly understand, just like right now, every single lesson. Is pre-recorded, the student goes in, watches it and then they log into a live zoom in which the teacher has opened for the entire timeframe. And ask questions, get clarification, work on assignments and so forth until the next switch. So you're saying that on this uneven schedule, their lessons will still be continued to be pre-recorded. One set of students is getting live instruction on a. Pre-recorded, but when they flip days, that group of students. Who got the pre-recorded will be able to get live. Interaction in that, um, fact of clarification and assistance and so forth with. Any questions they may have come out of the day that they want present, is that my understanding?
No, I, I guess, um, hopefully I can make that clear. So the A days, the students that choose the A, um, that come on A days. They would be getting live instruction and so would the B days. But we would be front loading information for them at the beginning of the week so that they're not home. You know, just not working on anything, that we would have the students for B days, we would have information in schoology for them on their A day.
Same information that's being delivered live to the A students.
Correct. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, almost as clear as mod, but yes.
If I could jump in real quick, I, I think because it's going to be similar for at the secondary. It's more of a flipped approach, so it would be the same content, same concept. But what you're doing at home would be more of an introductory or investigating it, and then when you're with the teacher. You're going to go through what you're learning, like a flipped classroom style. So you do have to front load that to be able to pull that off. But it's not the same lesson exactly, it's the same content, i- i- it's, it's like planning two days in two day chunks. And then you have to have a little twist to it with the group that is, has already, uh, introduced it. But you do have to kind of front load it and, and get us, get the ball rolling and then as you introduce new. New materials, the, the off day would be. Um, kind of maybe to do a reading or to do a video or, um, to, to gain some background information then when. And or, then when you're with the teacher, you're going to get more in depth into the, the content and explaining. And, and working through the, the, whatever the content is.
So every student will have the equal amount of odd and even days as far as some. Well, in regards to the live, uh. Face to face instruction versus, like you said, the uploading, so but you have to explain. To the community that there is an expectation that they're reviewing. And that, like you said, that uploading or that upfront process. Before the kid even, I mean, that would be highly adjusted even for a kid walking into the live classroom. That they reviewed it before they got there because you still have limited time. Face to face with that teacher and if a student can, uh, presee a potential issue conflict. Question or whatever, utilizing the time the best you can when you are in front. Of that classroom teacher, correct?
Right.
Okay, um. Go ahead, was that Marie?
Yeah, then. But then your virtual students. They're getting, they're, they should be getting continuous instruction. And a new lesson every day with the kids that are there, whether it's an A group or a B group, right?
Yes.
On virtual.
Right.
Getting a planned lesson every day, they're not coming in.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, so. So the expectation is that a student has to do Monday's lesson in order, when they're home. In order to come in Tuesday and go on to the next part of the lesson. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, so that clarified a little bit more. And let me put out there for clarification purposes, if I understand this correctly, Terry. The three hour day, yes, you say it's offered as an option, but isn't the real purpose behind? The shortened days, one, to eliminate lunch exposure. And two, to reduce overall exposure since they're saying the saturation issue. In regards to the longer, I mean, everybody says, oh, you go to the grocery store, you go here, you go there. I don't go to the grocery store for six hours and sit in the middle of the store and ruminate and everybody coming in and out. That's the difference between a classroom environment, so isn't that the true purpose behind a reduced day?
Yes. Yep, and to allow, you know, proper cleaning, yes, and to reduce exposure into the building with other students, yes.
And I, I agree with Marie, as far as the specials go, even now. You know, I, I wouldn't say necessarily a participation grade, you know, um, I, I think that selling, uh, the special teachers. For lack of a word, short, I mean, they're, they're, they're just as valuable. As our, um, all of our other teachers and. I understand that the kids may not be able to get into immediately, they may need to come home and take a little bit of a break, you know, eat and, um. Unwind and then we go towards, but again, especially in the elementary, you have one special a day, they're not doing. Ma- they're not doing all of their specials on the same day. So Monday will still be art, like in lighthouse. And Tuesday, you know, so it's not like they're going to be overwhelmed every single day with the specials and I would expect. That they would still be able to keep up and that, not necessarily a participation grade, but we've always done satisfactory. Not satisfactory, the kids should be updating, you know, like my son just did his big art project and took a picture of it and updated it. Uh, and or uploaded it and sent it to his teacher. I still expect that in this plan, if, if we do do a reduced day, that's just. And I don't know how other board members feel about that, you know, um, but that would be, I, I think more valuable for the kids and still keep them connected to their specials.
Sure. Yep, and that's why it's included in the schedule to make sure that we are including, yep.
It's kind of. I'm unlike Mr. Green, I can't digest in thirty seconds, so I'm going to need to sit and look at these slides. Over, you know, between now and next week. Um, to, you know, something that I read quickly now. May not ruminate with me until two o'clock in the morning when I wake up in the middle of the night and go, oh, I have a question now. Um, or the light bulb goes off and another question comes to mind, so I, I would like the opportunity to. Uh, review this, maybe reach out to you and Mr. McDonald for clarification before next meeting.
Good bet.
I do, I do have another concern. Um, first of all, with the half day scenario. If we go back face to face, half days are very difficult for parents to handle.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I am very concerned with the amount of content. That, uh, we were not able to cover because we took, uh, a focus standards. Um, maybe, maybe overall standards or whatever you want to call them. And those had to be the focus of instruction from March till June last year. So I think that, you know, um, if it would be possible. To extend that day somewhat. I think that, uh, educationally, uh, that it would be a timeframe that. Will be much easier for parents to be able to adapt to. Um, and it would give an opportunity for enhanced instruction. Uh, because that is a concern of mine of what these kids, especially having. A four months off of school and then three months over the summer. Uh, and we know that students do lose. So if we go back with a face to face model. Um, I would, I feel that we should look very carefully at, uh, longer than a half day. It's my opinion.
And I do have one more question for Terry. So on these reduced days, like the, um, the three hour and the four hour day and so forth. Just for clarification purposes, that's all of the students except for the ones that opted into a, a virtual?
Yes.
So we're looking at seventy percent of her, so we won't be able to social distance, people need to understand with that option. The only option you have for social distancing is your true, uh, option number one, correct? In which you have half coming at a time in which that reduces your numbers down to probably twelve to fifteen kids?
One and two give half the students that you can bring them in, but you can follow any of the hour plans. So if you wanted to do one and two, and then you wanted to add it to a four hour day. I was just giving you the, the sample schedule of what the day would look like. Um, but you can choose any of the options. And then choose how many hours of the day that the students.
So then you could co-mingle, okay. Yeah, because I know it's very important and I, and I do know that our teachers and as I am concerned about. You know, um, being able to truly, I mean, we've seen the disasters on. On Facebook and on social media where the kids are elbow to elbow, especially in passing times and so forth. That, um, to keep everybody as safe as possible and our medically fragile student staff and so forth. Um, social distancing, I think, needs to be highly, um, incorporated in whatever model we pick.
So there would be two choices, you would have the options, and then you would also think through how many hours of the day the students would be there, so there's two choices.
And then again, we can always gradually add on to that as time deems, but, you know, doesn't have to be all the rest of the semester, all the rest of the year, you can gradually, week by week, add more students and more time, correct?
Right.
Okay, that's more my questions are for right now.
This is Hendershaw, we'll bring it back to the boardroom if you will, and I will start with Dr. Burkmire.
So, I just want to clarify, again, I know we circle back to this with each person, but, so, just to make it clear to parents, that in any of these plans, the virtual specials, I mean, that's not, it's not like it wasn't the spring, it's not optional, you do have to like submit work and interact, even though you'd be going home, whether you do the whole day at 2:15, or a half-day, you know, at 11 or 12, whatever your building was, you have to go home and at some point get that in, interact and do that work, right?
Correct, yep, that's still expected.
Right, I think the, you know, I think the bigger piece for, to me, for parents is, you know, that that is not still, you know, an optional thing like it was more in the spring, you know, your.
No, our special teachers have been working hard in building K5 lessons at each building that they, that they service, and they're making those videos just like the classroom teachers are, and they're working hard to put those together and then having assignments for students.
Correct, okay, I guess I don't have a lot of questions at this point, as much as maybe some concerns here or there with different pieces of different models, you know, like when we mentioned kind of running these cohorts and hybrid opportunities like a flipped classroom, that really concerns me in the lower elementary model, you know, whether you are alternating and teaching, you know, in face-to-face for content, the one class on Monday and the other on Tuesday, and then the others have, you know, you have to do something else while you, when you're on your virtual day, or whether, you know, class A is getting this piece on Monday, they get it face-to-face, and then on Tuesday, the next class gets, you know, the next piece of the curriculum, you know, not necessarily what they did on Monday, but they did that virtual, whichever way it goes concerns me because we're asking, you know, we're relying back on especially, I would imagine, the younger students, but even students with special needs or different learning disabilities, we're relying on parents to have to make, help make those connections when your teacher's tied up all day, you know, because they're in the face-to-face classroom, but also, you know, I mean, we have to remember that with these models, we already have kindergarten students who vastly probably can't read, and we're already asking them to try and navigate a computer that they can't even read the words on, so how are they working in these flipped models and self-teaching or engaging well, I know it's very, it's difficult at best for, for some of those kids, and especially, you know, you can't predict the amount of parent support that they may be giving, and the teacher is with whichever cohort is face-to-face at that time, so I have my concerns really across the board in operating it with that. I think that, well, you know, that at this point for these, that's most of what I.
May I ask one other thing?
Sure.
There was a decision made already because of the needs of the special, special ed students, those in special programs, and right now they're going to be brought in every other day, correct?
They have already done that, they started the schedule on Monday.
Okay, they started Monday, so I'm assuming, because those are rooms where students are very tactile, and there needs to be a tremendous amount of disinfecting between the groups and so on, so I'm assuming any decision that we make as to the return-to-school plan, that those special programs will continue at least for now in the model that you've just started, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I do believe that when you're talking about your early childhood special ed, you know, your three- and four-year-old programs, really, everything in the room has to be sanitized before the next group can come in, so I'm just clarifying that we're not making that decision, those special programs will still get the accommodations that we've presently decided on, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, I also have to share my concern with the hybrid model, I think it's very, very confusing for kids, and especially K2, and again, I have major concerns because these are eight, these students that can't read, can't maneuver a computer, many of them left with older brothers and sisters that are trying to monitor, and a lot of these kids, even third, fourth, and fifth graders, do need assistance and direction, and your lower L need a tremendous amount of it, so I do really have concerns also with the hybrid model, and I think it's very difficult for parents to arrange work schedules and so on, when they've got to remember, well, this week, my students go, goes Monday and Wednesday, and yes, they go this Friday, but not next Friday, so I do have concerns with that.
All right, thank you, Marie, I'll move on to this.
My question is for the whole day option, that when would the virtual learners have any face-to-face interaction with their teachers?
They would have that at the end of the day for that 2:15 time to 3 o'clock, or the, or 3:30, when the teachers have that time away from students, the teacher would have that prep time to connect with students that are virtual.
I mean, that's a big concern on my part, I don't believe it's near enough time for, to get anything done when you're talking to your teacher, the prep hour, that they're prepping for the whole next day and everything else, that they're going to actually have a meaningful time with the virtual students. I mean, you kind of, I think if we go that route, we're kind of stringing our virtual students, hang them out to dry.
Not really, because you're talking about a fifth of the students, right?
And the information will be on Schoology for them to access any time of the day, that's the, that's the reason that they go virtual, so that they have the flexibility.
Right, with the virtual now, they're seeing their teacher every hour, now you're going to give them 20 minutes at the end of the day.
Right, it would be different, they would get the pre-recorded lessons.
Right, so they're going to be, everybody's going to be working at their own pace now, it's not going to be an instructor for virtual learning.
No.
Well, I agree that that would be different for those students compared to what they're doing now, but I don't know that that was ever guaranteed when you signed up for virtual learning, that you were going to have, you know, a full day of face-to-face instruction with the teacher.
Right.
You know, I see, I see both sides of it, you know, I would like to see maybe a little bit more than that, but at the same time, it's not as if there's a unmet promise there. Do we know to that extent, you know, I know we put out a survey in the past, that was when we were flipping between face-to-face and virtual and who would do what, and I guess as a parent, I feel like that data could be vastly different now, as obviously just, you know, McComb County data changes, national data, but also, you know, I think, like Marie said, the schedule of hybrid being difficult for some working families, while some families might have been willing to do face-to-face, they might not legitimately be able to do hybrid, which would put them into the virtual category, or, you know, maybe people who had signed up for virtual, you know, would be willing to do hybrid because of smaller class sizes, but they weren't willing to do it full-on face-to-face, so I feel like our data is skewed in that sense, like, do we really know how many people we're going to get where? And then, so that comes, you know, the class size, because they know that our class sizes are down, so then you split class sizes that are already below 20 students at half, I mean, drastically increase, you know, and always talk about social distancing being difficult, if not impossible, in public school buildings, but when you have a class of 10 kids, that's much more manageable, which I know is not a good thing for us to become as many students at this point, but, you know, there are just other, other things, and then there's, but then the inequities of, you know, who are we going to have classrooms with 10 kids and others that have 15, you know, I feel like those things could impact a parent's decision, how many kids are really in my class, is it 10, is it 20, is it, you know, so I feel like, in a way, we need to, we need some, I do study or some more data on who's, who's willing to go where at this point.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that at the director's meeting, we did talk about that, once we have the idea of the direction for go, we'll definitely do a survey to see, hey, this is what we're doing here, the options, and then we would know who's going to stay virtual, so, yes, we will do another survey to find out, you know, the students that still wish to stay virtual, absolutely.
I haven't, one other question, let's say that someone in a classroom did get COVID or the teacher got COVID, and so the class had to be quarantined, would that class automatically go back to virtual for the two weeks that they were out of school?
Well, the, if we have a COVID case, we would consult, I would have to consult the health department, and the health department is going to take it on a case-by-case basis, so depending on the situation, I would get, I would be advised by the health department and then go from there.
But that option would be available for those kids, so they didn't miss two weeks of instruction, if that's what we had to?
Yes, absolutely.
So those tablets, then, would they stay in the households, even if they chose to go face-to-face, the tablets would remain in the home, or if they went back face-to-face, those would all come back to the buildings?
Yeah, I mean, we've been trying to put out tablets and Chromebooks, you know, we did more in, you know, each week for the families that don't currently have one.
Right.
So during this time, yeah, to answer your question, yes.
Okay, because if those, you know, if they were forced to be quarantined for two weeks, then they need to have a way to access the virtual client, you know, virtual classroom.
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Rose, sorry, also, just one more, just kind of a comment question, if you chose virtual, you're expecting with the whole semester, obviously, if we go back to face-to-face, the virtual you were expecting is totally different than what you got, so are you going to have the option to come back in?
Absolutely, yep, you will have the option to go back.
Yeah, we would serve, I don't know if it, we would survey it again to see, yes, once we go the options, then we would let the families make the decision if they wanted to stay virtual for the semester of the year, yeah. Anything else, sir? Is it true?
I guess, I had to say, I mean, what, you said at the beginning of this, you guys had like work groups working on this, and teachers, I'm assuming, and, I mean, the key here is, obviously, why we're talking about this is, I think we need to get these kids back, obviously, everybody up here believes it, back face-to-face for some period of time, it's, you know, talking to the parents in the district, hearing from, hearing from even students, they, you know, they've been out of school way too long, so, but none of these decisions, none of these options, I mean, they're all going to come with some problems, nothing's going to be perfect, so what you're going to need buy-in from everyone at the school, I mean, I'm not an educator, but, so, in those talks, I guess it would be Terry and Joe, where, where the teachers at, the teachers that were on those committees, or even the administrators on those committees, what do you see as being something that you can get buy-in to be able to do and make it the best we can, I mean, obviously, you're going to try at everything, but whatever we do, we got to make sure that it's, you know, everybody that's doing it has buy-in, if that makes sense, I just think that, you know, it's going to be, it's hard on parents right now, it's going to be hard on parents if we go hybrid and it's every other day and their work schedules are going to be messed up, it's going to be, you know, the teachers are going to be probably concerned if we go to the option four, back to the option between virtual academy and full face-to-face, and have we talked about in that option of option four, because I know originally when we talked about it, we talked about there would be online teachers and there would be face-to-face, so maybe some that were concerned could do the face, could do the virtual, have we addressed any of those type challenges?
I think the challenges we still have, again, once we know the direction we're going to go as a board, we can then get into more detail, but the challenges we have are with the number of students that had requested virtual, right now, we had originally were hoping to separate it, virtual teacher, just for virtual kids, and then classroom teacher wants to come back, but that's raised some challenges, we're still looking at how we can separate it, because it is a challenge for teachers to say, hey, the kids are back face-to-face, you know, you're going to have instruction for those students, and then at the end of the day, reaching out to virtual, that's one of our challenges that we're still working on, is whether it can be separated or not, the other challenge or the other hurdle, in the secondary, we have to sanitize the desk in between each class, that's our other challenge, so those are two big, you know, hurdles at this time, but we have, to answer the question, yes, we had originally had hoped we could separate it, I know Terry and Joe are reevaluating that now that we have more information on our student population enrollment, and ideally, you know, ideally, separate, but we have to see whether we can do that, once we do another survey and we know how many people are in state, virtual, we know how many kids are going to come back face-to-face, we can reevaluate that.
As far as that's for the option four, with having the online teachers and then face-to-face, totally separate, that's ideal.
Yeah, once we know the option, then we can do that survey, and go back to, and we separate and have a virtual teacher, separate from the classroom.
But I think, like, I get it, I mean, I don't know how you, but I think that, that feeds into the, to the decision, I mean, if you, I don't know what the rest of the board, but if you could tell me that we could have online teachers, have face-to-face teachers.
Yep.
That, that would be the ideal situation.
Yes.
And then, but as far as, obviously, that takes some more work, but on the options, one, two, and three, I guess I would say, to Terry, in your work groups, what do, what do you see as what everybody thinks is the most feasible and that everybody would have the most amount of buy-in to do, because I just think we need to get the kids back to school in person for at least a little.
Right, option three seemed to be something that, actually, I'm sorry, option two was more of a buy-in where we would have the combination of A and B days with the Wednesday online day.
I think we can, you know, answer, hopefully I've answered the question, John, we can adjust, like even, I thought you had mentioned about extending it more than just a half-day, that was a good point, you know, as far as the, you know, parents and the student, even if it is an A or, you know, A, B days split, or the option three is, you know, part of that could be, you're progressing students back to bringing in those young fives and kindergarten for a day or two, get them acclimated to the process, and you're going to add your first and second grade, you know, for a day or two, and you're going to.
I think with the option three.
Eventually building two, if we wanted to still go half students each day, or full students every day, all students coming back.
So you could technically maybe take option three and option two and put it together.
Sure.
But don't, the everyday thing's a little crazy, like if you did a week of all young fives, and then next week.
Well, we would, yeah, we, you know, the grade levels, like for secondary, you know, you bring in your sixth graders, a day or two, get them acclimated, high school, you bring in your ninth. High school, you bring in your ninth graders a day or two, get them acclimated, and then you bring in all the grades in a progression. You know, every other, you know, every couple of days, and you're building two, either the half days, full days, half the students or all the students.
Okay, I mean, that's, I, you've answered it. It was just, and it seemed where, I think you you answered it, uh, Terry, as far as where the buy in sits and probably around that option two, if we didn't go the back to the full face to face, so.
Right.
All right.
Any else, sir? Yes, I I just, it's a move, it's a moving target because, you know, we have lost students. I was going to update for later on enrollment. We have lost students. Once we return, once the board makes a decision that's weak, um, how many students are going to come back? How many are not? How many are going to go virtual? So to answer a lot of the details that you're asking, we'll know that once we have a better understanding of direction. And we can go out and survey the parents and look at, hey, how can, because we are asking a lot, trying to juggle virtual student and then also the classroom.
Oh, that's, yeah, that'd be.
And a lot of districts that were moving back to face to face full time, they're using that hybrid as, you know, just a temporary progression back. So that would be, you know, you could do that for a week, you could do it two weeks or an extended period of time. But the way I see it is it's it's a way to acclimate students back into buildings so that we're not all intermingling right away at the beginning.
I mean, I I and I I think that's great. I think as far as the social distancing aspect, I mean, that, you know, this header shot brought up and and others. And I, and obviously, that was one of my big concerns before, and and I, it still is. But I think, and to your point, uh, Mr. Burke, where what you, what's going to be different? And in my, where I'm at is, I guess, my risk tolerance. It's never going to be, there's no metrics that we could say, you know, you talk to this doctor, this doctor is going to say that. Talk to another doctor, you talk to two different sides of the political spectrum. It's it's kind of all over the board. But at this point, my risk tolerance is, and I think a lot of parents have brought it up before, is I think we're doing more damage to the kids by not bringing them back and not trying to do all we can to do it. And yeah, we know what what the risk is out there, but with all the cases going down, everything going down, you know, I think the extra time that we took is good, but, you know, I think we're on the right track. So thank you, guys, for putting all these together. Sorry, Mr. President.
That's right. Mr. Mittelstadt?
Yeah, I would agree on the, Maria, on the full, I think, a full day. They're going to bring the kids in and go through that whole process. Full day would be, I think, would be a better option than the half day. So the other question I had too is whether we consider adding more teachers and maybe having class, limiting classes to twenty, four by five setup. See what that's, can I bring everybody back by adding another class in the building? It's costly, but will that work? If I've got twenty-four in a room and I've got four classrooms now, that's ninety-six. It's taken five classrooms and it's eighteen in the classroom. So I bring everybody back. But again, that daddy can have space, they're going to know what the numbers are, they're going to get that staff, that cost. But maybe you do that for King Two or something, just uh bring that all back full time. Other than that, there's some options here you need to consider. And like everybody said, without one good answer, we've got to come up with what we think is best we can do for right now and then make adjustments if we go. Yeah, and uh, Mr. Green, to answer that, or or Mr. Mittelstadt, part of your returning to school each each month, you're going to reevaluate. That's part of the plan. So, yes, the board, you decide each month, as we get more information, more data, uh, the board can adjust the plans as we go forward.
So I I don't have anything really to add, to be honest with you, I think we've covered. But I do appreciate is the board's thinking out of the box, excuse the expression, Mr. Mittelstadt talked about bringing in an extra teacher, talking about modifying what's already been presented. I too obviously have a concern about the the virtual students versus uh in in person students, whether hybrid or whether they're back full time. Our teachers only have so much time in a day. We're trying to work through that with our teachers now, but I've been out in the buildings a lot over the past, uh, ten days since school started, and that's a lot of the concerns that I'm hearing. So I'm glad the rest of the board is cognizant of that as well. So, Mr. McDonald, no, you cannot.
All right. Uh, for any of these plans, Terry, does, are there any ideas, um, you know, just going forward or anything being floated for support for teachers? Um, for example, like the full day schedule, um, you know, it was brought up that forty-five minutes isn't much, you know, to support the virtual students. So are there still any plans of supporting, you know, the classroom teachers with assistance in somehow or some way? I know we had discussed in curriculum committee, uh, some ideas, I don't know if those.
Well, the full day, the full day still gives teachers two hours and twenty minutes of prep.
They have fifty-five now.
You're cutting the day short, correct, Terry?
Yeah, they only have fifty-three currently, but going with the full day, starting at eight-thirty in the morning, students are dismissed at two-fifteen. That gives teachers two hours and twenty minutes.
Okay.
Um, along that line, though, we have kept literacy tutors to provide smaller group instruction, right? An intervention. How many literacy tutors do we presently have?
For elementary, I believe it right now, it's around eleven.
Okay. Um, is it possible? Um, how many literacy paras have we furloughed?
Paras? I would have to ask, um, I believe it's, it's at least one for each building. I think there were two at each building. So Laura would have to answer that for me.
Um, Laura, do you know how many at each building of the paras? Literacy paras.
Hey, I'm Laura, good job muted.
I'm un, I'm unmuted now. Um, Marie, no, not off the top of my head. I I don't, um, I don't know that exact number, but I would, I would guesstimate, um, probably twenty.
So Lisa's suggesting if we keep literacy tutors and we replace them if they were down any or they've left. And then we bring the literacy paras off furlough. That would be an additional intervention that could be provided, especially for K one, to help the teachers in the classroom. So I, maybe we could look into what that would look like. Would that give us two per building possibly for elementary building?
Yes.
I mean, that that would be a great help to our beginning readers, our students struggling even in first grade. Uh, because first graders haven't had any intervention first and second since last March. So I I do think that might be another area. Yes, it's costly, but it it isn't costly because it will be going to help ensure that these students are going to get the best intervention possible. And for, if we go back face to face, they're taking kids out of the rooms to be able to provide intervention. And that's helping with the whole social distancing thing, too.
Marie, are you needing to utilize the paras and literacy tutors for the virtual or for the face to face or both?
Well, you could for both, depending on the needs of the classrooms, because the literacy tutors could provide, well, for K one, two, the paras could be used, but the literacy tutors definitely, um, for major interventions needed, okay? Because I'm really concerned about our our first graders this year.
Absolutely.
You know, so it could be across the board because we've always given literacy support K five. But more support, uh, intervention, MTSS levels of three and, uh, two and three are the ones that have always gotten priority. So, um, it could be looked at and the building administrators could decide that of where the most help is needed. I mean, if you have a teacher in third, fourth, or fifth graders, in in third, fourth, or fifth grade, and all of their kids are reading on level, obviously, you don't need that additional support. But maybe you need that support for three kids who are in virtual. And so it could be individualized. I also think that we should be utilizing special teachers because they prepare one set of lessons for the week for each grade level, K five. But they also could be doing interventions in the classroom with, let's say, first graders in sight words or uh in kindergarten with letter and and sound recognition. Um, just reading to those kids, having kids read to them. Um, so they may not have specific training, but they're also teachers and could provide additional. I mean, everybody should be working toward bringing these kids up to where they they need to be and providing additional support for the classroom teachers. The paras is another avenue to do that. You're using your literacy tutors, then we bring the paras back. And um, you can, you have some paras that even if they're not literacy paras, they may be adept or had previously been literacy tutors that you could also bring them back if you know that they could fill a need in the building to be working with some of these kids that really need the intervention. That's just my opinion.
Mr. McDonald, you're up, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd also like to thank our staff, especially the teachers, for their effort thus far as we got back in the remote setting. And as we switch gears here to our secondary options. All right. We're going to go through these options, and they include hybrid, which is, we've been talking about, is half of the students every other day. Block schedule, which means hours one through three at the secondary level and four through six on a different day. So half your classes uh on each day. A lot of them, uh, of these models involve an early release for students. And we can combine many of them, as Terry was, and also phase them in. Uh, I know our goal is always at some point to get all the kids in when it's safe or when we when we feel it's safe to to full time. Uh, and then, of course, we're going to cover uh the option of full face to face and um full time with virtual. So as we talked about, when we get into these, we know that there's pros and cons to each of these. If there was a perfect model, uh, everyone would be doing it. As we go through these, I want to reiterate that virtual option's always going to be available for those who want it. So we're going to start with option one, and that is the hybrid uh option. Again, hybrid meaning face to face every other day. And of course, that virtual academy is an option. So as we talk about this, we use that A B schedule just to delineate between the two groups. Like Terry said, it'd be based on student address, last name, so that we could keep households together in case there's different last names within the household. That would be the primary goal where it could deviate primarily by last name, but including the household. Some students attend Monday, Wednesday, and every other Friday, and the the other group on Tuesday, Thursday, every other Friday, just like the elementary options. But work at home does continue on those off days like we talked about. That in in reinforces what's going on in school. Bringing our students in, uh, that is going to provide the social emotional support uh that that they're missing when they're not with their peers and their teachers. Also, on the in-person days, those small group that Marie and 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 others were talking about can be provided. Uh, when they bring it, come in with their with their teachers or academic coach, literacy tutors, those that are available. And again, the uh virtual option is always out there. So let's take a look at a schedule here, and this uh is the option one, the hybrid with all six hours. All right, with the six hours, we did in this model reduce the daily schedule. So every class, every other day, clearly, you know, common sense tells you that allows for the smaller class sizes and improved social distancing. The adjusted daily schedule provides our teachers with an additional four and a half hours a week to connect with their virtual students, prepare lessons. And I wouldn't necessarily, you know, call it prep time, but it it they'll they'll be able to use it for all of the above, to to connect with the virtual students, to prepare lessons, to however they they see fit. And we also extended our passing times as we shortened the instructional hours to assist with the sanitizing of the desks, which we know is one of our challenges um with with this model. Uh, and we know that we are definitely going to need help of our teachers to do so. Um, and I'm not aware of any districts uh that do not. So if we could go ahead and move to uh the next, we took another uh version of, as we worked on this and and looked at our our ability to combine, this is the same model that I just showed you, except we added a remote Wednesday. So I I included in the middle column the A and B cohort, Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, and that remote Wednesday for both. Now, that day, the way it looks, I just added the the hours one through six in order there, but you can compress that also where that 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 remote time could be compressed and you could uh throughout the day, and you could free up a block of time in the afternoon uh for teachers uh to work on uh prepping or contacting the virtual kids, holding um office hours. This model, you know, as we talk about um the dichotomy of more time in front of teachers and more time remote, you know, with the pro and con to everything. The, obviously, the virtual Wednesday is going to allow for the midweek deep cleaning. It provides an additional five more hours for teachers to plan and connect for a total of nine and a half to compare to what uh they would, they, that's what they would have uh for additional prep. So on top of what they would normally have. We know that, you know, when we work through these models, um, as we talked about, Leonard's talked about, Terry's talked about, we do need to provide time for teachers, and of course, teachers would want as much as they can get. And um, you know, again, the dichotomy is we also need to have kids in front of teachers because we know that even in a high quality remote setting does not compare to in-person teaching with our teachers. Um, so that is our, the balance, I think, that I just listened to, the struggle um throughout the elementary. It's going to be the same through the secondary. So if we flip to the next slide, I can walk us through some of these, some of these challenges and considerations of these models. Would it be one or one A with that remote Wednesday? Students see teachers every other day. That's going to allow that social distancing. We have the longer passing times. And on the hybrid days, students work on online for upcoming live classes. That's, we've just, we talked about that a little bit with the elementary. And those days are, those days, work is, will be assigned. That's, that's how people do the hybrid days. The hybrid is not new. Hybrid has been used throughout the 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 country and the state, and many districts around us are using them. There is work to be done on the hybrid days. And again, in the secondary, uh, talking with our staff and principals, it lends itself uh more for a flipped classroom, again, to do background readings and come in and and work through that with the teachers. One A, again, uh, is the midweek cleaning, teacher planning. Uh, and then, of course, the the balance with that is students are in only two days a week. So that is a hybrid option utilizing the six hours a day. I know that that was, when I spoke with with the secondary principals, that was um the one that they liked. I know that that was when I spoke with with the secondary principals, that was the one that they liked. Because as we'll get into some of the challenges with the block schedule with secondary. But but I'm just just to throw in there, I I did hear, you know, you wanted some feedback of what our meetings, what kind of feedback we got from each group. So. The next option, a hybrid option two. What we did here is took the block schedule, again, meaning that that is part of your day. Hours one through three, one day. And four, five and six, the next, and I can but we combined it with. The hybrid so that the A B cohort or the every other day and the every other day, every other Friday. So if you'll take a look at it. What I can tell you with the hundred and five minutes of instructional time. As I looked around at other plans, that's kind of right in the middle. I've seen some hybrid or some blocks with shorter. And I've seen some with instructional time that's longer. So that could be adjusted either way, five minutes or or so either way. And of course, if you would, if we adjust. That to a hundred minutes, then each each hour there, you're gonna gain five more minutes. So that would be fifteen more that you could put towards office hours. So I just wanna make it clear that this was a kind of a middle ground model. And we can adjust it either way to to provide more time for office hours, which would be. Obviously, again, connecting with the virtual students to prepare lessons. But when you do that, you take away from, you'll shorten the day. Number one, for the students that are there, and you'll shorten their instructional time. If you if if on the on the bottom, I'll talk a little bit about the lunches. I left the lunches at three with this one. If you have a longer period, you can you could add four, as we'll see later, but this one, this model has three. And because of the way the the hours break, putting it in second hour, you do eat a little earlier, but again, these students do start. Early and they get out early, so they they can they can. Get some stuff, get some snacks when they get home. But I I totaled the the prep time for you on the bottom. I put that in minutes and this particular one. And you'll see, I I spell it out, I think, on the next slide, if we go to that one. Convert it to hours makes it a little bit easier to understand. So on the hybrid. Option two. Again, students would see all their teachers live each week. Half of them they see twice a week and the other half only once, and that's because of the every other Friday. It's gonna allow for more social distancing because you have the cohorts, half of your population, and then minus, obviously, the remote students. It allows for longer passing times. It gives us time to sanitize those desks. It also gives time, you know, for for a little bit of breaks in there because those are long hours. Those are long chunks. On hybrid days, again, I want to reiterate throughout those, those are not off days. They are days that are connected to the the other days. It will be an adjustment for our teachers to learn how to plan in those chunks, and we'll we'll help them through that. We'll look at some best practices and give them some examples and work in our PLCs to be able to do that. On on the block schedule, I just wanna point out that in any of these block schedules where you have hours one through three, four through six. They are make it difficult for our current, the way we do CTE classes and some of our other programs. The reason being with the CTE classes, they're already in a block schedule. So for example, if you're in, there's a first, second hour block. Now, these are the classes that such as hospitality where they would travel to from the high school to middle school south. Or auto, or some of our construction trades and 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 others. But the one, the classes that are in a block, so if they if you have a first, second hour block, that'll work fine. You you run into trouble when you have a third and fourth hour block. Because third hour is on one day and fourth hour is on the next. So you're gonna be splitting that. Now you have one hour. And it's gonna make it very, very difficult to travel. Because you're doing it twice for one hour and there's time that obviously takes to go from the high school to south. So I wanna point that out. The hour, the the time conversion equals out to because there's an N A B, it's an average of. Three and a quarter hours additional teacher prep time, again, would be time where they could. Do traditional prep and reach out to their virtual students. All right, if we go to the next option. This one is similar, but we added the hybrid Wednesday. I think we've kind of covered that. This one, again, the the hundred and five minutes. I'll reiterate, that can be adjusted. I would give or take five minutes either way. You could add time or subtract time, whatever way we see fit to the office hour or to the instructional time. We have the remote Wednesday, so you're gonna pick up time there. Again, on a remote day, you can compress that time. Into what I mean by that is instead of, you know, from seven seventeen to two oh nine, that could be over. Anytime we choose, it could be one o'clock, it could be twelve thirty, and then you could free up a block of time. For where the teachers then would. Work with their teachers online during those remote hours and then have that block of time later. Whether it's early or late, you could let the kids sleep in, you could you could do it later in the day. We have flexibility in that. Establish it with them, and the teachers could have that maybe early morning work time or afternoon work time. This model again shows you that you have the hybrid and a block. Again, if we flip to the next slide, we'll go through some of the considerations and challenges. We know that this is gonna provide that contact because they are coming into the school. You can you can have the smaller cohorts of students because you're splitting them in half. Again, midweek cleaning and additional planning time. That will shorten the school day and give the the student school day and give the teachers an additional three in a tenth hour. To connect with their virtual and prepare. And your remote students. Teachers, you know, on on those days, you're again, we've talked about that, you're gonna add more time. More time for teachers to connect and plan. I know a feedback, you know, like we talked about with the principals, feedback from teachers, they they. Like the more time to to plan, obviously. So these days where they have the additional prep time seems to be the preferred. Model for the teachers. Option four. All right, option four. This is your kind of a traditional block with a cohort, and it does not include. The extra office hour time. And I'm I'll be upfront and tell you that we need to have extra time for our teachers. And the reason why this one had been out there was considerations for lunch. It gives you the a longer because you're you're not given the office time. But one of those hours obviously is a prep hour for a teacher, and it's longer in that regard, but but not to the to. To the extent that I feel that they would need to be able to 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 reach their virtual students. This could only be an option if we were somehow able to separate. And where you have the four lunches that then gives you. More social distancing during that eating time. So if we flip to the next one, the next slide, we can. Can go through some of those that I've already discussed. You have the contact, you're still seeing your teachers. We can get that additional lunch. That's really the 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 little piece to that one. And then, again, this is the same amount of teacher prep over a two-week period with no additional time to connect with. Their students. So we'll go through option five. Okay, option five, here is a similar schedule, but with the office hour. Again, it shortens that instructional time. Say it again, we can toy with that either way, a few minutes. But because that time gets shortened, we're gonna have, we would have three lunches during that time. It has the office hour. You can adjust it a little bit. Either way. That is an every other Friday, so it's it's a traditional without the block, without the cohort. So the key, obviously, in this one in red is every student is in every day. That might be something where we talked about earlier, that as we move through a progression. You know, you might start in a hybrid every other day and then work towards this. Setting where, again, you could do the same with the six-hour day. Six-hour day obviously has more passing times. The the one thing with the block is it gives you fewer passing times, and we know that those were some of the issues where we're cleaning desks during passing times. And obviously, having more face to face in an unstructured environment, interaction with the the passing time. So it again, not conducive to CTE and some of our other programs. So if we flip to the next slide, please. I've outlined some of those things for you so that you could kind of review those things that we just talked about. If you were passing times again, here, though, you have an additional three hours and ten minutes of prep. To because of that office hour. Now that's the way it's set now. Obviously, if we increase. Shorten, I should say, the instructional time, you can increase the office hour times, and that can go up and over. Over a two-week period because of the every other component with that, it becomes six and a quarter. I know that math looks funny. It's really like three point. Twelve minutes and it it comes out to be about a quarter. When you do the math. So that's option five. Option six. Back where we started, I took our August the the eleventh. This again is where. You're back to the students who wanna be virtual are virtual, and we bring in. The rest of the students. I would imagine in this, what I would recommend is it would just be the the schedule as normal. That we would have, we talked about this, the registration would have to take place again. We would need to take inventory of those numbers. What we could do, we could look for some anomalies if people who chose virtual created lopsided classes. We could balance them. If we balance them, that means students' schedules will get moved. And then we, if we had to do something like that because of a lopsided class. And for this for safety, we would make every effort to keep teachers or kids with the same teachers. But maybe move hours and then go from there. But there there could be some balancing that could take place. Like Terry said, in these in these situations, you know, we would just make sure that students coming in, I think we're. Pretty much aware of it now, but all the safety factors have to to be in place in terms of wearing a masks. And sanitizing regularly and clean hands and so on. So. That was a, that was quite a lot. Maybe I should have broke mine up into two, but. I am more than happy to go through and answer questions that you may have on each and any one of these models.
So, Mr. McDonald, I think that's that's the reason why honestly that we opted to have this presented today. To give, you know, give our teachers, to give our students, to give our community a chance to focus more on data, and then hopefully. Make a move on which option we're gonna move to. At our next meeting. So I will go back out to Mrs. Hendersham and see if you have any questions.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute.
We we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Because it says I'm not unmuted. Okay, that's odd. All right. Mr. McDonald, I know you and I had already had some conversations earlier this week. In regards to all these plans. And. First of all, I think we, I really appreciate the six plans, but um. I I'm gonna use this motto, simple is better. I think. That there is somewhat, some of the plans are very complicated, and I think you alluded to that. And all of them have unique challenges, but can I ask you a question? Because the slide moved by quickly, and. I don't have this one, the slide in my packet.
Any of them back?
That was, that was one A.
Yeah.
The one that you kind of said that seems that people were were liking there. Does that one have additional prep time in it? I like I said, that's not in my slide that I have on my computer right now.
Yeah, one A not only has a shortened day at the, when students are in, so there is a dismissal period. But it also, the one A added that remote Wednesday.
Okay, and that was another question I had. In regards to, I saw the schedule you put up, and obviously, that's a high school schedule.
Yes.
Do you have a time schedule for a middle school?
Yes, and and because I didn't wanna add, you know, and maybe I should. Went back and forth, well, I would have had to add. Slides for each, but if you could imagine, if you will, the start time in in a forty-three-minute class. Because high school and middle school are, high school classes are fifty-eight because of the extra minute of passing, and middle school are fifty-nine. So they would be very similar with the, we kept the standard start time and.
Is there, what is their start time now? Eight what?
It was eight, eight, um, eight oh four.
Four.
Eight oh four, so so what we would do is is take the five minutes. What I did is took five minutes from each hour. And then added the passing and then and then, I think it was fifteen minutes actually, so then I could compress and add to the. To the dismissal slash office hours. So it would be the same same pattern, just adjusting the timeframe. So you could, you could, you could anticipate that you would get out an hour and ten minutes earlier than normal. And start at the same time for the student dismissal, so instead of getting out at. Two fifty-two, they would get out at at. You know, one. Forty-two, forty-three, something in there.
Okay, so just what I understand, option one A gives your teachers additional prep time, which is what they're asking for understandably. Given, you know, the virtual environment.
It does.
It also gives the kids all six classes of interaction. On a daily basis, and it allows students to be in a social distancing. Environment much more consistently than than some of the other plans, correct?
It does.
Okay, so that kind of seems to hit all of the notes, and I know I had discussed with you. You know, I do work for the ISD, I do work with twenty districts, and I can share with my fellow board members. Trials and tribulations of their schedules as they've rolled out for their CTE kids, which I work with. Their early college students and the dual enrollment kids, is you would have to have another plan set up for those kids. Because a lot of them have been in programs that have started midsummer. And much sooner than your local high school, so you really can't go back and do that work. So I think you'd be causing a lot of. Lot of planning and and issues for your high school counselors to try to work out alternatives for those students. So just keep that in the back of your head as well as, you know. They're trying to work on master schedules, but now you have, you know, a hundred or or so kids needing. Basically, a specialized plan for them, almost a PC of sorts to meet all of their needs and all of their classes. And, you know, like you said, I have, you know, I know a lot of kids in those CTE programs, but that's gonna cause havoc. On some of those programs, and you don't want that to cause the program numbers to diminish either because of the inconsistencies. Created, so I think your more traditional plans, as I said, the more simple, I mean, there's old saying about keeping things simple, right? And I think, and I can tell you, I I work with a lot of kids from Frazier. Some of them are confused which day is blue, which day is gold, if it's coming or going. You know, when you have those block schedules and what is today, I mean, hard enough for, I know for my own daughter, sometimes it's hard enough getting them up in the morning. Let alone trying to get them to a certain schedule at a certain day at a certain time. Some of these kids multitask better than others. And I don't know if we wanna add additional stressors to their very already stressful lives. And I don't know if we want to add additional stressors to their very already stressful lives. Just my counselor's perspective there.
Yep. All right. Uh, why don't we move on to Mrs. Witt?
I have two questions. Is there any elementary schedule that would conflict with any secondary schedule as far as busing?
Well, I would, I would tell you, we've had, we've had transportation look at them and we know that if we kept them similar, they would stack better. So I, I guess if, if we mix and match them, we'd have to take a close look at that to see if we mixed and matched them, if there would be, um, conflict. But I think...
Because we have a lot of, you know, you've got hybrids coming and going. You've got special programs. You've got, you know, different dismissal times, some even a four, three-hour day, four-hour day, five-hour day. You have early dismissal every, I mean...
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, it's not all cut and dried like we have early schools, late schools. And, you know, the buses for middle school can return in time to get elementary kids and all of those things. So this seems...
We did send those, uh, we did send these plans, um, to our food service and transportation. And I know Andy Case, uh, is assisting with both of them to, to kind of oversee and, and look into those potential issues. So, um, they have taken a look at it.
Okay, but you might want to, before we make a final decision, take the worst case for me there and if we put them together, if they don't work so that we'll make a decision for elementary and it ends up that we can't bus them.
Mr. Witt?
Yes, will do.
Bump in there just one quick second on something that you said. Is it possible, Marie brings up the busing issue and, uh, you know, like I said, my brain is swirling with stuff here and it's the reason why I need to digest. But is it possible that, because I've had a lot of parents tell me that they don't feel comfortable with putting their kids on the bus because obviously it's more difficult to social distance. And is it possible to send a survey out to ask parents who might end up doing their, because we might have to have a plan for the buildings to accommodate all this parent drop-off and pickup, just to see if maybe we can't redistribute our buses differently in a different format if we know parents, uh, upon a return to school, whether it's full-time, part-time, whatever, don't plan on using our busing system. That might be something that the district might want to look at really quickly here because I know other districts have sent out similar surveys to see if they can redistribute their buses in a different fashion to account for some of that overlay, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
My only concern was be what, keep building schedules based on that because parents...
I know.
Could change their mind.
I get that.
That happens.
Yes.
Yeah.
And my, my other question is, um, because you have a number of secondary principals, yourself previously and now secondary director. Is there one of these plans that they, that, that they would, I don't exactly want to say recommend, but feel that would be the smoothest transition for kids to make and the best for instruction?
Yeah, um, like I, I, I tried to point that out, the, the option A, or excuse me, one, uh, and 1A were, were the two that they favored.
That they favored, okay.
Secondary principals. I did reach out to all three of them.
Anything else, Mr. Witt?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Middleton?
Block scheduling, what are other schools doing if they've got block schedules? How do they do their CTE at other schools with block schedules? Block schedules aren't necessarily unique.
Oh, I, I think what they're, you know, what they're doing is a combination of what I said where, um, on the hours that they, they have the block, um, they work out fine or they may have to split it over two days. Some of, some of them have, um, we, we can take a look, look at the, the chart later we have coming up, kind of who does it. But that's what, um, and I, and I know, go ahead.
Mr. McDonald, I can kind of answer that a little bit because I have students involved in that.
Okay.
Across all 20 districts. Well, I have 20 on a 21 district. Mr. Middleton, I can tell you that some of the things they came up with are not the smoothest transitions for students. Like I have students that have overlaps with different programs and literally they're being sent to a teacher's office with a separate computer to try to log into a different environment while they're still sitting in the same classroom that they're supposed to be getting instruction in. So they're basically trying to do two things at one time. Both sides of that coin are going to slowly suffer because a kid can't multitask just truly that much. So I, I know that for effects, I have kids from the far north side, all the way out to Warren Pond that have expressed this, the extreme stress and the challenge of trying to, um, or log in there. Some of them are, in all honesty, they're, they're doing two of their classes face-to-face and they're forced for the third class to be remote. So they're being, they're split into a remote and a face-to-face environment because they can't blend all their obligations together. So then you've got kids coming home at night and trying to log in and do their work in the evening. So, you know, it's not the most, um, they're doing their best to accommodate. That's the best word I can come up with. If you're finding accommodations, yeah.
They either split it or they split it with, um, face-to-face and virtual.
Yeah.
No, my, my point is, other people have done block scheduling for years.
Well, when they do that, Steve, they...
They compare what's good and what's bad and we can learn from them. That's my point. I'm not trying to specify whether we do or don't. I'm just saying is that this is a unique to high schools that have block scheduling and CTE programs.
No, it isn't. But what, what they do is they, they build their schedule, you know, with that in mind. And ours was built differently. And, and they may not have a third, fourth block. They might do their CTE for a second block or fifth, sixth, six block, or they might have more than three, uh, three-period day. So I, I think our challenge is that we built it one way and then a block. For those courses, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have scheduled them that way if we knew we were going to go in a three-hour block.
Right, for those districts that do have blocks, Joe, I can back you up on, they have eight-hour dates.
Right.
Frazier has four, they have eight hours and so does Romeo. They don't have the traditional six-hour day like they do.
They do four and four and then it, it cuts in the...
It's even, yeah.
So can we re, can we reschedule kids then or is that's impossible? Make it accommodating?
Uh, it's about, it's about as impossible as, uh, you know, anything's possible, but that's about as far as from possible as, as it is.
Possible.
Anything else, Mr. Middleton? Mr. Drew?
I guess I, the, uh, from what I'm hearing, the option 1A that's out there looks like, I mean, especially with being secondary, which is a little bit, I can say it's easy, but a little bit better with the kids because they're older and the work schedule might not be as much of a problem for the parents. But it sounds, from what I heard you say, Joe, that was the teachers had buy-in on that, the admins had buy-in. It allows for solo distancing, gives the teachers extra time, which we know they're going to need as far as the prep timing. There's really, what's the negatives to, to the option 1A?
Uh, the negatives to option 1A is that, that you have multiple passings, uh, which then you're going to have, uh, you know, repeated cleanings and you're going to have more, um, kids in the hallway at more times. And then you also have kids in school only two days a week.
Well, yeah, I mean, you...
I mean, you know, it's just like, like we've talked about, there's something good and bad with ever, with all of them. Uh, some of the teachers did like the block with the, uh, with the remote day. So option three, the principals liked the six-hour day. Uh, and I think they're being protective of all their programs. And that's why, uh, they like that. Plus it's, it, like you said, it's, 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 I think it's more like what we do now. It's less confusing.
There's the between, double the amount of time cleaning. What do you have, one through six a day? They're keeping kids in the same room for two hours versus an hour and have them move every hour.
I mean, at this point, I would look at it like two days a week as a positive. I mean, as opposed to right now.
The word we have now.
Yeah, so, but okay, that's the questions for right now, but before next week.
Mr. Moses?
Yeah, just when I iterate that, uh, I believe keeping a virtual day is very important. I think it's going to pay dividends at the end of when COVID does happen and it will, that kids don't fall 14 days behind every time they get sick because they're going to be going from no virtual to having to relog on, they learn. More, uh, more stimulus to keep at least one virtual day. They keep the teacher sharp and teach a bit too and allow more, uh, more interaction with your online virtual students.
And also in any hybrid, you, you'll have the, the virtual too, even without their total remote day because it'll be the, the, the day when they're in and out.
Um, so when we talk about office hours, um, for secondary, are we saying then, you know, going back to the students that remain fully virtual, um, we will be cutting out at that point, at the point that we have started offering hybrid, we would be cutting out any live virtual lessons for those students. Because I'm assuming, you know, if you have an electives teacher or somebody who has multiple preps in terms of, you know, they teach multiple different, different courses, you know, offering 70 minutes, even though that's 59 minutes. So, you know, on option one for office hours, um, you know, the more classes that you teach, the different courses you teach, the more, you know, you're cut off as it is. So I'm assuming this means then that the virtual students secondary get cut off from live instruction online, right?
No. So what, when you have that 70 minutes, like you said, and you could even, uh, take five more and, and add it to that, you have it every day. So during that time, you could work a schedule, uh, you could, you could give a subject matter each day and/or split Fridays or whatever, whatever day you pick with their two electives. You know, they have six hours, there's five days. You could also, you could also run it where there's a live lesson for, um, on Monday, it could be math in the first half, 35 minutes, and it could be science, the second 35 minutes. You could work a schedule where there's live interaction. That's part of why those, that time's there. That same thing could be done with the elementary schedule. Um, we, we toyed with, uh, the other schedules I showed you in the past where I had a day for each, each day of the week could be a, uh, a virtual day for that. Now, it's not going to be every day, every class, but you certainly do not cut them out of it. Um, they'll have live connections each week. And again, I think like you pointed out earlier that that was, that was kind of what we said, uh, they would have is live interactions or live connections each week. So it would not cut it out. Uh, it would reduce it compared to now, obviously, because everyone is virtual and so are all our teachers, but it wouldn't cut it out completely.
So I guess to that extent, like, I feel like to be able to, to figure out the logistics of this, I would need to know what the expectation is for the staff and for the teachers. You know, what is the expectation for offering some sort of live instruction to the virtual students? Because if you're saying 69 minutes a day, but, you know, I have, I have three preps or, you know, um, versus somebody who might only have one and they could put, you know, all their students on one day if they wanted to. I mean, in that sense, when you have to be in front of your students live, what's the... We have to know what the expectation is going to be for the teachers because if the expectation isn't that they're going to do some sort of live thing at some point during the week, that's really not prep time when it comes to that point. So, you know, that's, that's more teaching time.
Yeah, I made that, made that clear.
So I, I guess to me, I feel like I need to know what is the expectation for the virtual, um, you know, are we saying, whatever it might be, whatever you guys would suggest, but, you know, a 20-minute lesson or, you know, whatever. Because if you're live and you're doing that, you're certainly not doing your traditional prep time and preparing because you're now teaching. So I think we have to be careful in crossing that over. And I think that, you know, that can kind of go towards the elementary to that extent as well. When you go to look at that full-day model, um, you have, you know, maybe, well, I also want to point out because I, I know when Mr. Witt had noted the, the issue with the, on the elementary up to the 2:15 dismissal. Um, I think it miscalculates the prep time in the full-day schedule by doing that as well because I could be wrong, but as I keep looking at it, I think you decrease, I think you calculated the prep time based on the wrong hours put in there. So that would make a difference as well. But, um, but again, you know, if you're, if you're going to say that for those 45 minutes at the end of the day for elementary as well, that, you know, that's time that you can be live for your virtual students, again, we need to be cautious of not calling that prep time because you're teaching. That's not what teachers would call prep time. So I think, you know, we have to think about that because I think we will run into issues trying to figure out these schedules, um, you know, because ultimately the teachers do need prep time, um, no matter which, which route you go. And probably additional because we do know we have virtual students and we're trying to bring back face-to-face. So I just caution on that. And then, um, and then to that extent, um, when you look at some of the block schedules for the, the ones where it says Wednesday is a remote day, um, I tend to lean, you know, if, if you don't go with a full-day schedule and you're looking at blocks, I, I tend to lean towards a remote day instead of an every other Friday just because of the logistics of every other Friday for families and parents. But, um, again, what is the expectation on remote days? Is this fully remote where students, everybody is accessing pre-recorded stuff on Schoology? So if teachers have their stuff together, they're done, you know, that could be a whole day of prep for them? Or is this, you know, well, is there required live interaction virtually for teachers on that day? And again, then we go back to how much prep time do we really get? Um, I, I feel like these are things that we need to know or work out. You know, that's something, you know, obviously discussed with the teachers. But I feel like that's something we need to figure out, um, to have an accurate portrayal of, you know, without the answer of what we're requiring for virtual students. I don't know how we can have an accurate idea of how much prep time we're truly saying we're giving our students.
Yeah, and, and that's the exact same thing that when I talked with Jamie Petron, she, she mentioned that exact same thing. And what we talked about was, and what I mentioned already, on that remote Wednesday, you can compress that day and create time where there is prep time and where they're, where they're just, um, meeting with the remote, uh, students in a, in a shorter period. I tried to explain it didn't have to be that whole day. Also with the office hours, I made it pretty clear that those are, it's not necessarily prep, but they also, one of those hours, and even on, on any day you, you take it, they have a prep hour in one of those hours. So that, that is always, that is still always there, always prep. And that additional time, but, but I understand what you're saying to, to maybe make it more clearly defined on what part of that is. And, and where I, when I talked with, with Jamie, I kind of talked to her about, you know, it's being the, the same expectation as right now where there's, there's some 20 minutes of instruction, which then leaves addition, additional time to, to truly plan, prep or connect. And, um, we would have to put some, some more clear, uh, expectations on that so that, you know, a teacher's, uh, you know, can meet those expectations. So I understand that.
My other thought on the Wednesday remote day, when you mentioned how that you could compress your... My other thought on the Wednesday remote day, when you mentioned how that you could compress your time, you know, to make your schedule work, that I worry about only because, you know, there are any of these students that are going to be looking for that, you know, face-to-face time, especially if you're looking at elementary. But in the secondary level, more so, it's a problem because, you know, if all the teachers choose to run their live lesson at seven fifteen, well, I certainly can't be on the live lesson for all my classes at once. Uh, but I feel like if you don't make people stick to the hours, um, you know, then you you're kind of running an issue where kids are picking a choosing between what's more important. If they need the live interaction for the lesson, if they're struggling in two or three classes and they they really want to be on there, you're you're you may be forcing them to pick and choose by offering so much leniency on these Wednesdays. But.
I I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. When we compress the time, there would still, what I mean is that it it you could make the hours um, not necessarily a a full hour, but they could be like a forty-minute uh instructional period. That would be set and established and then it would go one through six. And then that day would end early, that's what I mean by compressing it. And then that would leave a either a block uh before uh or and like I said, when I presented it, it could also be um, they could give the teachers time to work in the morning and then start their day a little bit later, but they would have clearly uh a set time when they would go to their first hour, second hour, third hour, fourth hour, but it doesn't have to be the exact time of the bell schedule like we have uh right now. And 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 like you said, the first example you gave me, you were asking for more time for teacher prep and then the other example is more face time for the kids. And and that's again, the dichotomy that we're the balance that we're trying to work through. But we, I I agree that it should be clearly spelled out. And that's what I meant by compressing it and then giving the teachers a set time, whether it's a an an early release or a late start for the kids um would would do that and and um, I think that would work.
Okay, thanks.
Mrs. Hunter, do you have something additional?
Um, I just wanted to, you know how Mr. McDonald, you brought up option one A?
Yes.
Um, why wasn't option one A uh evaluated for the elementary level?
I I couldn't answer that, but I know that when I looked at one and I looked at some of the other ones, it's why it wasn't original and and I uh in the first part, I said, well, we're talking about how we can combine and and it just kind of uh struck me that I would add it, so I I don't know.
Because I would say, you know, I, Miss Burke Meyer brought up a a good point about the alternating Fridays potentially causing scheduling conflict for parents, but if it was every Wednesday and the kids were, that might not, if that's a schedule, then a parent could potentially work around that, knowing that it's the same every week instead of the two days, three days, two days, three days type deal, which Miss Burke Meyer had brought up could create, you know, daycare issues.
But I know that option two for elementary, not to get into Terry's uh realm there, has that remote Wednesday.
Okay.
Right.
This was maybe labeled something different because it's hard to follow, you know, eleven or twelve different plans here.
I know. I fully understand.
And the other thing I wanted to clarify is Mr. um Deru had said, you know, what's the downside of option one A? I know you had gone through a couple of your points, but and one of the points was about passing time, but you need to clarify, you only have half the amount of kids in the hallway during the passing time, not your full building. So that is not as much of an issue as if you had a full building or even seventy percent capacity in your building, you're gonna be able to still manage some type of social distancing with half the amount of students, even though you still have six passing times, correct?
Yep.
Just want to clarify a few points from my own muddled mind right now.
Uh, I have a couple of points and then we'll move on to the agenda. Um, I obviously had the concern that Mr. Middlestat expressed with the block scheduling breaking up that third and fourth hour. Uh, I'm glad you hear they may have some options for additional sanitation. And I also appreciate, based on my background, what Mr. Case is up against dealing with food transportation and a janitorial. Uh, I guess the one thing to Miss Burke Meyer's point that I'll kind of pile on to is um, I believe we need to, we need to parallel these and swim in the same lanes. There are a lot of parents that count on their secondary student to come home uh and let their elementary student into the house uh and be uh figured to get them sat down, make sure they go to after-school snack and start on their homework. So my concern would be that possibly in some of these scenarios where our elementary kids make it home before our secondary kids. Uh, so outside of the normal uh daycare issues and parenting issues, uh, we we if we don't choose correctly and Mr. Case and the fellows said next week on where we may have some holes uh of the plans that just don't line up or we simply can't provide the transportation. But more importantly, is just make sure that our kids are safe when they get home. We certainly don't want to have uh seven, eight-year-olds coming home to an empty house uh because their uh fifteen or sixteen-year-old sisters are still in school, maybe, you know, half hour, forty-five minutes. So, um, those are my only comments to prevent a woodside. Do you have anything else you want to throw in there or you did this for?
Yeah, we wanted to, part of this presentation, I know, sorry, could you bring it back up?
Yeah, we have two more slides.
Could you bring it back up, Tim? So part of the presentation, we just wanted to share with the board, um, bring it up, Tim, it's to give you an idea of what the county's doing, what your neighbors are doing. I know we did that question, could you go, keep going? Right there, so I probably shouldn't have made it much larger, but what you're looking at is to give you an idea of what your districts are doing throughout the county, seeing that quite a deep uh doing the virtual learning. Um, you know, probably should have blown that up so you can see it a little better. But you could see, you know, your neighboring schools like your Richmond, Lance, Cruz, uh New Haven, Elgin, Act. Uh, those are face-to-face, to give you an idea of what's going on. Then the next slide, I think then shows you um what it what it has there, okay. So the next slide then shows you neighbors, so you know, face-to-face, you got the hybrid block, you know, virtual, so it just gives the board an idea um, how, you know, some of the ideas of what the county districts are doing. So you, you got quite a few that are still virtual and some that are, you know, the hybrid have days of their day and some that are face-to-face. I just wanted to share that with the board.
With the uh.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Uh, sorry, the with the with our neighbors, with Lance Cruz, Richmond, Elgin, New Haven. Have you talked to their superintendents and what their experience, and they all obviously have a face-to-face option? We heard about four here and we've heard about some others that are having a few issues, but have you heard about anything with those four?
Yeah, I mean, they all have, I, you know, obviously concerns from, you know, about the social distancing thing that's been a challenge. But, you know, again, the social distancing from face-to-face is not part of the roadmap. That's why in that plan, the governor, you know, is asking for mandating, especially the secondary for for masks. Um, but, you know, just like uh, just like we would do, we're face-to-face, sanitizing all the high-use areas, sanitizing buildings each day. So the superintendents talk, uh, you know, once, twice a week. Um, so we got a good idea of what everybody's doing, how they're handling when they get a COVID case.
That's what, more or less, I mean, obviously the social distancing, you gotta try do that, but as far as, do they share with you, not obviously who, that's suck, but if they have confirmed cases, what they're doing, what, you know, the ones we see go public, but, you know, I'm sure there's, are they having any issues, are they able to control it? And I just liken it, like I've said a couple of times up here too, construction sites, I mean, I deal with construction sites on a daily basis. In the beginning, it was, it was quite a bit, now we're really, we got down that. There's confirmed case and know what to do, that guy goes home for a couple of weeks and you know, it's not really disrupting the jobs like it did in the beginning, and I would put that a lot like the schools because there's, I mean, there's some of these jobs that have five hundred people.
Yeah, yeah, we would uh, you know, we would send this like all of this, we'd send no results or parents that if they had a case, but, you know, the, we would contact the health department and we would consult with them and you know, in talking with them, they're gonna take a case by case. Now, there are some discussions, and I think we talked at the last meeting, um, you know, if we had metrics or we had, you know, for counties, we do that, hey, the district. The county was seven percent um or less positive or five, you know, whatever it might be. That we set a standard that would greatly help, you know, districts across the state um to say whether they could be face-to-face or what the options would have. But again, this is a pandemic, this is due for everybody, due for the health department, so, you know, protocols are changing, you know, five a week, you know, since this started, we've had different uh protocols in this every week on on how to proceed forward, so we're all learning, you know, we got athletics starting off.
And that's what I think, I get all that and you're gonna go by what the health department says, I guess. One of my big reasons, at least from my personal motive, when I look at those four and look at they're not shut down yet, I would have got a lot of money that a lot of these districts that opened up would have been completely shut down. But obviously, we've got things under control, we're we're able to, I don't, they're all, but we're able to, we're able to mitigate, I guess, for lack of a better term, the risk out there and keep these kids in school.
I can't think of any, there was a high school in Michigan that did close down a period of time, it happened to a few of them because of the number of cases that building they had, so.
Okay.
That's what we talked, the health department also, you know, the number of cases that that you had in a building, um, they would help you, it would help it advise whether it falls a building down um or not.
The only thing I'll add to every one of the eight great communities, there's always unintended consequences to every decision you make. Whether that's personal, whether it's business, whether it's it's trying to figure out what's best for for our community at this point. Uh, I wish I had a crystal ball and I wish that, uh, you know, somebody could tell me if I chose option one A for the high school, ninety days from now, what's it gonna look like? Uh, unfortunately, we don't have that crystal ball, and again, I'll say it again because I believe that there are unintended consequences to every decision you make. And we're gonna make what we think is the best decision for our community. Uh, I ask the community to also understand that there are things that are gonna pop up that we couldn't anticipate and couldn't plan for, um, that we didn't see coming, um, because even these districts that are still open and haven't been shut down are having unintended consequences to everything that they've decided to do. So with that, I will call, uh, close the uh the topic for for now. Uh, again, these will be up on the Anchor Bay School website hopefully tomorrow. I know it's a lot of data, I'm overwhelmed, I know my whole board members are overwhelmed, we're all taking notes. Uh, I want the parents and the teachers and again, the community as a whole, log on tomorrow, uh, take a look at that presentation, it is lengthy. Um, try to understand uh what option you think is gonna suit best for your family, but also bear in mind uh that we can't have twelve different options uh as our selection, we've got to figure out how we move forward as a community for both our elementary and our secondary. So with that being said, we're gonna move on to the open forum. Uh, open forum, at this point, the public is invited to comment in Board of Education's agenda. Uh, those who wish to participate, uh, you can either click on your chat button there and we'll try to get to you or if you've already submitted um ahead of time to my technology folks that are sitting here, uh, we'll try to get to you. Um, we will get to you. The only thing I would ask is part of our board policy is truly a three-minute period. Um, and I I really like everyone to try to adhere to that. If you had another sentence or two to finish, you thought, that's great. Um, but we can't have four, five, six, seven-minute presentations going on because we've got significant amount of people that want to speak before tonight. Uh, so with that, uh, Tim, are you ready to go?
Uh, yeah.
Well, the only other piece I'll throw out is uh, just for future knowledge, I don't know if you can change it today. If you are on the Zoom call uh and you've requested to speak ahead of time, uh, if your name doesn't match on the Zoom call, we're having difficulty finding you, locating you, or meeting you. Um, it's definitely adding to the frustration of the community as a whole that can't, can't get an opportunity to speak. Uh, so please, if you are signing on uh using your cell phone or using another device, please make sure that the device name matches your first and last name so we can actually find you a little bit quicker and make things move forward. So back to you, Tim.
Tina, I can't find the Tina, there's no Tina in there.
Oh, Tina, uh, well, let's move along and then we'll circle back if uh, if it jumps on.
Stephanie.
I'm gonna butcher that last name, Stephanie.
Mugo. And no first or last names in there.
Uh, we're striking out here, we're going down the list, we're not finding anybody in the uh, in the Zoom.
Uh, Matt McCormick.
Yeah. How about a Matt McCormick?
Yes.
We can hear you, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I just really honestly just want to talk on here about why I feel the need to go face-to-face after especially um dealing with this virtual, um, I have a kindergartner and just, it just, for kids that young, sitting them in front of a computer for hours a day, it's just not really functional. You know, I have a daughter that uh has really bad ADHD and sitting her in front of a computer for hours on end, trying to get her to focus. And then also, I have a son also, while dealing with both of them simultaneously, my wife at home, it's just too much for her to try and bounce between two different students, helping each student out. And then my son, uh, you know, he has a teacher that isn't exactly the most tech savvy. So anything that he might miss out on, we go back to try and figure out what he has to do to complete these assignments. Well, whereas my daughter's teacher's pretty darn ball with it, she's got everything recorded where she can see everything. Um, she's not really uploading everything the way that needs to be, so when we're going back to try and do assignments with him, he's not really retaining everything and going back, trying to do assignments with him is just being a real, real headache. And I feel like getting kids back in school is just, there's a whole different ballgame to kids being in front of a teacher and that authoritative figure as opposed to trying to sit at a computer hours on end, you know, trying to focus, trying to do all the work and all, I mean, we have two kids, I can only imagine parents out there that have three, four, five kids, whatever, trying to balance all these kids with overlapping uh schedules and then as far as even taking a break for lunch or whatnot, um, their schedules overlap. There's no time for my wife to take a break with any of the individual kids to have her lunch with either of those kids because everything overlaps. It's just a huge headache, um, and in particular, sitting at a computer for hours on end, uh, my son has a condition where he just gets really worn out. And without him being able to take a break, he's got a five-and-four plan where in school, stuff is set up for him to be able to take those breaks when needed. But on a computer, when he's sitting there, when he needs to take a break, if he doesn't, you know, if he has to take that break, he's gonna miss something and then when he comes to us trying to figure out what he missed, like I said, with the one teacher that he has, she's not the most tech savvy, it's kind of hard to go back and figure out exactly what was trying to be explained at the point, at the time. And then also communication-wise, uh, we have emailed his teacher multiple times about certain things and just trying to get responses back has just been a headache. Now, as a matter of fact, never once even got a response from his teacher as far as certain logins for certain things of that nature and it's just really not working out the way that it was really, everybody thought it would work out. And at this point, I think either option three or option four is the way to go. Honestly, I like the option three you guys put out there where you slowly bring the kindergartners back so they don't get acclimated to how school is gonna run and then slowly bring the other kids back over time. And that's just all I really want to let you guys know.
All right, thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
Tim? Melissa Mitchell.
Melissa Mitchell. Did you find her, Tim?
Yes, I muted her.
Yes, I am muted.
Melissa Mitchell.
She's unmuted.
Do we move on, circle back, sir?
Brandy. Brandy.
Is it Brady?
No, Brandy in here. How? Jeremy, I don't know if this is Jeremy Howe or not. We can see.
Jeremiah Howell. Mr. Howell.
Nope.
All right, moving along.
Amanda Stewart.
Amanda Stewart? Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Amanda.
Hi, um I first I want to thank enough speak. Um I have a son that is on the spectrum. And I also have a third grader who I can just give props to Ms. Forrester, who has done an amazing job with him. He is not on the spectrum, but my seventh grader. I spoke at the last meeting and shared my concerns about him being virtual. Um and there were a lot of concerns when I took the challenge on about being virtual. And my concerns are coming to coming to fruition. I have exhausted every resource. Now, I respectfully, everything I say to you guys, I've listened to you guys talk for two hours, I say respectfully to you and out of respect for those that, you know, I have come up with several options for us, I appreciate that. The one thing I've listened to is that we came up with an option for special education, which we did, but only for cognitively impaired. We did not come up with anything with kids on the spectrum. I have listened to um options that have come up um for kids who have honors classes and would be overlapping, but nothing for kids on the spectrum. I have listened to how specials would be a concern. That's not a um that is not part of their education is their specials at this point when we're in unprecedented times. I have exhausted every measure, only given ten days to find my seventh grader, a proctor who can keep him on task. Everybody I've talked to from the elementary that he attended from first grade on when he was nonverbal, tearing his clothes off, couldn't process anything to being very well um high functioning by fifth grade and then struggling through sixth grade and then hitting this pandemic. Um not one person has seemed to meet his needs in this time. I have spoke my concerns with Mr. Cosmano. I have spoke my concerns with his caseload teacher. We have dropped a uh one elective for him, which is art to make things easier. And he is at three Fs, a C and a D at this time because of missed assignments, because he cannot, he can absolutely not navigate because of his severe processing disorder. And that's not to mention all of the other sensory disorders that he has. It has been suggested to me, instead of the school providing a paraprof for him, it has been such a um it has been suggested that I go and I pay for someone to come into my home. One being someone who is charging a hundred and fifty dollars per student to bring people into their home um who has four students up to sixth grade, and maybe she would take him on. Every other person I've exhausted, every person that I have talked to that have dealt with him at Ashley Elementary to the Anchor Bay Middle School North says that he absolutely, this is not ideal for him. He cannot process the Schoology platform. He, like I said, most of his Fs are due to missing assignments because he doesn't know how to navigate. And with my help till ten thirty at night for the past ten days, I we are exhausted, not only from frustration, but we're frustrating him. Sports have gone back in session. A SAC program for a hundred and fifty dollars a week has gone into session. But yet, we've come up with all these different ways to come to see the hybrid schedules instead of just going face to face. I'm not worried about what day I'm going to get him to what class because I have faced the challenges of the past seven years with him. I don't care about what class he has to attend to per day or how many days a week or even how I'm going to get my third grader off the bus with no adult present to get him off the bus. That is not my concern. My concern is, is that he had a three point two grade point average until this all started. And that was the hard work of the teachers. That was the hard work of his parents, his therapists and everybody in between who has got us through this time. That has been our concern first and foremost. I'm not worried about, I guess, my, we're worried about a teacher's accommodations and when they're going to fit in all this prep time. Why are we, I mean, we've had kids, we've, you know, we've seen on Facebook, we've seen pictures that parents are having their kids clean bathrooms and that dust their bedrooms and household chores. But yet, we're not having the kids responsible about wiping their own desks and taking that responsibility off the teachers and saying, hey, when you come into class, we're going to grab, hand you a paper towel and a Lysol wipe and we're going to have you wipe your own desk. And when you come into class, that is what you're going to do each day. Because as we know, as this pandemic, hygiene is one of the first, one of the most important things. Working in a doctor's office, being a respiratory therapist for almost twenty years, I know that that's the most important. I'm concerned for him. I've watched his teeth get worse. I've watched his frustrations get worse. I've watched his psoriasis and his body get worse. And I don't know how much more. I have not yet to see anybody say anything about these kids on the spectrum. And to no offense to any parent out there with ADD, ADHD, I get it. But these kids who are on the spectrum that have sensory and processing disorders, we, not one person has mentioned those kids that cannot process and get through this virtual schooling. And that's why we chose to send our kids to school. I understand there's a huge risk. And I get those that have chose to stay home to be safe and to, but then yet, we're still giving them opportunity to just play sports. Those have the have, all the parents that have chosen to go virtual, want their kids to play sports or come into school and do lab work. I don't understand it. If you want to stay safe and stay home, then we need to keep those kids staying safe and staying home because of compromised immune uh immune systems and all those other things. I get that and I totally respect those decisions. But we can't have, we can't be not addressing these kids that are on the spectrum that cannot process and do virtual school. And not one person, and I have called the school many times, I have talked to a lot of different teachers. I have talked to Mr. Cosmano. I have talked to everyone. Begging and pleading, I get that you're going to cut me off. And I listened for two hours, all these different teacher expectation and what we're doing for them. And I get what you're asking me to, you're going to cut me off. But not one person has mentioned these kids on the spectrum. And I am so happy for those kids that cognitively impaired, they needed to go back to school, but so does my child. And if we're not going to come up with a plan within the next week, then that has to be considered as well as we go further down this road of what we're going to do and give me some kind of peace of mind that my kid and my child is going to get an education just as much as those that are cognitively impaired and severely impaired.
Amanda, Superintendent Woodside just uh indicated to me that he is going to call you personally for him.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Superintendent Woodside just indicated to me that he will personally call you tomorrow.
I would appreciate that because I am just frustrated and watching him just go down the tubes. And like I said, I appreciate everything that anybody who has, you know, given me the options, but I can't afford to pay a teacher a hundred and fifty dollars because she's doing it out of her home and I can't. I just need some help for him. And if you can hear me from this, then I would appreciate a phone call tomorrow. That's all I can ask.
Absolutely. And for some reason, um if you guys don't connect, please reach out to me. My phone number is actually on the Board of Education webpage, uh but I'm sure that Mr. Woodside will get to you tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Shannon V. is how I'll say it. I I know that that I'll butcher that last name if I even try.
Do uh can you hear me?
I can, sir.
Okay, this is actually Kevin. My wife is Shannon.
Very good. Go ahead, sir.
I want to start off by saying uh sincerely saying uh thank you. Uh Patrick, you and I spoke earlier this week on the the phone. I think we share the same concerns and sentiments. And I want to say thank you for everybody for taking their time to be here tonight and uh attempting to work towards a solution. That said, I am a little bit concerned about what I've heard here tonight in regards to essentially trying to recreate the wheel, causing an unbelievable amount of confusion uh for these households and really not focusing in on what's applicable for this is a working class, Anchor Bay Community Schools is a working class uh working class community. These families and households, I've heard, you know, people criticize other people saying, well, school is not your child's daycare. You need to take this responsibility. I I feel we really need to take into account the damage that we're doing to these households of income. You know, the truth of the story is, in a couple of months, there could be households in this community that are struggling to put food on their table and pay mortgages. And I don't know how that's not being taken into account above, you know, the concerns of someone getting sick. I I have all the numbers here in front of me. Uh you know, the CDC, school age children, five to seventeen, five to seventeen years of age, seasonal influenza is six point seven times higher hospitalization rate than COVID nineteen. We weren't having this discussion last year. Six point seven five times higher is the seasonal flu for school age children than COVID nineteen. Not one time, not two time, not three, not four, not five, not six, six point seven five times. That's pretty alarming. Uh I spoke with Devin Miller, the uh social media, the media contact for the American Pediatric Association today. Uh he is willing to lend contact and help with anybody that needs numbers and help to put a plan together. It is put right on the front page of the American Pediatric Association's website. Reopening schools in a way maximizes safety, learning and well-being of children. Returning to school is important for the healthy development and well-being of children. And that is off of the American Pediatrics Association. World Health Orders, school should reopen. It is critical for schools to open as quickly as possible for in-person learning. Also on there, it states children, through a scientific study that has been done through Scandinavian schools that have been open now for five months, showing children do not carry a high enough viral load to transmit the disease effectively. Some communities in Scandinavians attribute the slow of the disease to children being back into school as a means of breaks and slowing transmissions. So what I'm kind of getting at tonight is I've been sitting here for two hours, listening to all this conversation. And I feel like if we boil it down and get to the facts and the statistics, a lot of this conversation doesn't need to be had. Also, now with the current data from the healthcare industry, which I have the luxury of working in, twenty to fifty percent of affection rate throughout of community and T-cell immunity is a real thing. Here in Metro Detroit, we achieved that at the end of May. Shutdowns were only put in place to keep ICUs from reaching capacity. In Metro Detroit, we never reached capacity. We've been in single-digit capacity since the end of May. And all I ask for you guys is that someone here tonight even stated that they're getting their information off of Facebook. And I feel that is completely unacceptable. All these other districts that you showed, and I very much appreciate you putting that information, they are showing that their groups are ahead of our groups in getting their kids back to back to school. We moved to this district for these schools.
If I could uh wrap it up, sir, that'd be great.
Yep. We want to see our kids back in school. Uh we want to see, we want this community to be the gold standard. We want to stay here and uh, you know, unfortunately, we'll share the same sentiment with most people. I suppose if we start to see that go in the wrong direction, that we will have to, you know, we we would have to make alternate decisions on where we ultimately decide to reside because school is the number one thing priority for us being a family.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh we appreciate your comments. Rick? Uh Rick? E- Echol? Echol?
Yes.
Hi, Rick. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi. Uh I was wondering, why was SAC in extracurricular activities such as cross-country being allowed to continue in person when actual education seems to be relegated to a backseat in this district? Um you listed a slide which gave a bunch of uh facts and numbers from Compton County Health Department, uh the chief medical examiner from McCombs County. Dr. Daniel Spitz said that those numbers are actually skewed. You have people that died with Corona and you had people that died of Corona. Those numbers are wildly off, for one. You've got the, you you guys can't say that we've never had this epidemic before. You had H one N one in two thousand nine. You had sixty point eight million cases and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-nine deaths. COVID this year, six hundred, six point six four million cases and not nearly as many deaths as one of the previous people have spoken about. The numbers don't match up. The flu is far more deadly than the Corona is. We need our kids back in school and we need it now. I don't know how you guys expect full-time working parents to play the, a parent, an employee and a teacher. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Drew? Drew?
Angelo Jarro? Jarro?
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
My name is Angela Jarro and I'm a freshman here at Anchor Bay High School. I wanted to give a student perspective um on the remote learning and express my opinion on going back to school. Uh first off, I just wanted to thank my teachers and the teachers here at the high school. Uh you guys are doing amazing. I understand the difficulty with the technology we've been having one hundred percent. My concern is the board's decision with school. Um you guys have had since June to figure out how we're going to go back in return. Um you had parents fill out a survey to see what worked best for them. And for once, in the three years I have been going to these board meetings, I was touched. I thought, wow, they are really listening to us and really trying to work with us here. Um but I was wrong. In fact, you guys did the exact opposite because the majority of parents voted in-person schooling. The original plan you guys had voted on, which was now option six, was perfect for all families. The ones who who wanted to go back could go back and the ones who wanted to continue their education virtually had an option as well. The students need to go back to school. The toll the entire pandemic took was and still is devastating. The way this is affecting us and the way we were just cut off, I would expect you guys to understand because you guys have children of your own. Our mental health has basically shut down and that also affects our learning. When students are put to learn online, they will not learn the same as the, as if it was face-to-face instruction. We need to return to school. Pull aside any kid who did remote learning in March through June and ask them if anything, if they learned anything. I'll tell you the answer is no. Nothing was grasped. And if there was material that was learned, it was barely anything. It was not the teacher's fault. Learning virtually just doesn't work for children. Face-to-face instruction is needed for us to learn. Most of the districts around ours open. My mother took my siblings that that used to attend Anchor Bay out in a district that is going in person because with our family schedule, we can't have two children learning online. And even if our schedules were different, their brains can't stay on the iPad all day trying to learn because they won't grasp anything. Anchor Bay lost many students because of this issue and other issues as well. I know what I am saying goes for a lot of families too. You need to work with us here. At the end of the day, our education is what matters here and that should be the number one concern. So I ask you, please, listen to what we need as students and as human beings. So I ask you, please, listen to what we need as students and as human beings. Send us back to school and vote on option six. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. I always love hearing from our students. Uh, thanks for taking the time to reach out, or I really appreciate it. Bernard Locky, Locky? Uh, Bernard? Bar- Barno, I'm sorry.
Yes, this is Barno. I am a parent. My children go to Anchor Bay School District. Uh, my question is, what is the fate of a student who are uh, on IEP because my daughter gets, uh, speech therapy? Is, uh, this service going to be provided to them and when and how? That's it.
Sorry, put you on the spot. No, that's okay. Well, Terry, did we reach out to all the students that are currently receiving speech and language?
Yeah, students with IEPs and 504s have a contingency plan that their caseload provider is putting together for them. So yes, speech and language is one of them, the, the services that will be for all the students that qualify.
Oh, did we, with Mrs. Barno, we, we haven't, so we haven't reached out to those parents yet, or we aren't, is that?
That's, they're, they're putting those together because they have to, they have to look at ea- each student's individual IEP to see what needs to happen. And they should be hearing, they should have heard from them by now. So if they're not, I have your name and I will look into it.
I hope anybody's contacted Mrs. Barno. Uh, the last name's actually L.O.S. Ma'am, we will have someone get to you tomorrow. I, I apologize if you haven't heard something or if there's been a missed patient, uh, but we'll have someone get to you tomorrow. Uh, next one is Rachel. Rachel, uh, Schwager, Schwager? I'm terrible, but I apologize to everybody on the list.
Schwager, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, I would like to start off by saying good evening and thank you for giving me a time to speak here. Um, I just want to start by saying, until you are at home with, um, three children, you have no idea the struggles that are going on um, and trying to teach your children. Um, as a full-time stay-at-home mother of three, I have a second and third grader and also a two-year-old. I implore you to reconsider the current plan of record for reopening our school district. Despite numerous attempts to adjust to new, this new normal, I'm afraid the number and severity of the challenges we face at home is far too great to handle. Technology, over the last few weeks, we have had extreme um, ex, numerous internet connectivity issues and challenges logging into Zoom from the school-issued laptops, which creates an amount of stress that even most skilled parent cannot overcome. My children cry almost every day, but even the glimpse of seeing faces on a screen gives them a brief moment of solace. Social, the lack of engagement and social interaction with other students will undoubtedly have a profound negative effect on my children and their development. My children have been at home for the past seven months and have to ask them to think of school and playtime within the same four walls is just too much to ask. As a parent, I strongly appreciate the skills of education and the transfer of knowledge. And while I'm doing my best to help answer questions throughout the remote school day, I just don't process the skills required to best educate my children while simultaneously keeping the home in order. At home, the list of distractions in the home are overwhelming despite our best efforts to keep our children focused. Whether it is dog sparking or a two-year-old crying is clear that in the second week of school, my kids are not engaged and not able to sit still and focus. As you may know, many folks would entertain a virtual hybrid setup that would alleviate and this daily pressure on parents and children. And seeing other districts reopen all around us, for example, Richmond and Lance Cruz, gives me hope and confidence that we can safely reopen our district and get our children back in school. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Jessica?
Jessica Coggle?
Coggle, yep.
Yep, sorry. I, I, I'm just gonna keep apologizing and it's.
That's right. I'm used to it. Um, I have to say, as a parent, we are parents of three children in the school district, um, all of which are school of choice. We've never had a problem with it and we've always supported that decision until recently um, because of the serious delayed decisions made by the school board. Um, I, I know it's a lot of work. I can't even begin to imagine what you have to go through, but I feel like Mrs. Henderson had said, too much has been put out there to decide from. There's too many things to choose from. Um, and I want my children to go back face-to-face by all means. However, um, speaking for the other side, I, I, the last time you guys updated us, you left us with the understanding that virtual students and online students would have separate teachers, which was acknowledged in tonight's meeting. Uh, you said you would reevaluate it. However, I want you to consider, when will you actually tell the parents? Because you realized that wasn't an option. However, you did not let the parents know until we logged on the first day and found out that they were together. Um, I know somebody had mentioned earlier, um, I apologize, I don't know who it is, about there was no guarantee for live sessions. However, your email on September first regarding the parent update virtual or remote learning did say that all courses would be a combination of recorded lessons, live discussion sessions, as well as independent work and daily posted material. So I, I apologize, but I had to point out, I do feel it was a guarantee that was reneged on. But I really think you guys are leaving these virtual kids out. The kids that don't have a choice to come back to school, that do have medical issues, you guys are really leaving them out to dry. With the two hours, you're given the teachers and one of the options for elementary, two hours and twenty minutes. You know, for a hundred and forty minutes, if, say, if they have, you know, a minimum of ten kids, that's fourteen minutes a kid. And now they also have to put in there the time that it takes to lesson plan. And I think you guys are, I, I think there's, there's much being put on these teachers. I, I don't feel that you guys are really listening to the teachers. Um, I would like to believe that, but it's, it's very hard, um, from talking to teachers in district, different districts. Um, it doesn't seem like you guys are listening to the teachers because I think if you put both the face-to-face kids and the virtual kids are going to suffer because you're spreading these teachers far too thin, um, making them do both. But I think the district needs to give clear and concise information to these parents moving forward. Um, or we're going to set these teachers and kids up for failure. Um, I, I think you guys got to listen to the teachers, not just hear them, but you need to listen to these teachers because I think that I have the confidence that what they have to contribute is truly going to benefit the kids in the long run. So I, I guess, thank you for your time. I just would like you to consider the virtual as well. Um, I would like these kids to go face-to-face, but I would also like you to please consider more time or separating the teachers for the virtual students.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, obviously, uh, several of the board members mentioned tonight, we have concerns about the virtual and the split of the, you know, teacher's time and what's a prep hour and what's a virtual hour. Uh, you know, I'm certain that, uh, we will work our way through that here in the next weekend and tone down those plans. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Brian Powers? Brian Powers?
Yeah, my ear?
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
Okay, so, all this talk tonight about the, this hybrid plan, and there was a lot of, you know, A and B. And I can just tell you, as a working parent with, with a, in a two-income household, it's, it's not A or B, it's an F. What we're going through now is bad enough. This actually would just amplify that and turn it into a complete debacle for working families who have two parents in the household, both working with multiple kids in school, um, because it essentially doubles our problem. Now I'm supposed to get two different kids at two different times to the start of school day, then get them back home in the middle of the day, get them reset back up for, for whatever they're going to have to do the rest of the day through the end of the day, and also oversee that process. And I'm supposed to do that while at the same time, I'm doing my job so I can provide income and pay my bills and pay my taxes. Um, that, that would just be an utter debacle. Anybody, uh, that looks great on PowerPoint, I'm sure, but, um, anybody who would support that plan on this board, it would suggest to me that you either don't have children actively going to school right now or you're not in a household where there's dual income and you're responsible for being at least the assistant teacher in the equation. Um, and that you're not necessarily in touch with what we're going through right now. Um, and I would invite any board member who thinks this is a good idea. Come spend a day with a family who's got two people working and two people in school. And I'll open up my door. You're more than welcome to come spend the day with me. We'll all wear masks. I'll feed you. It'll be a great experience. And you, um, can sit there and see for yourself, see what we're doing right now, and then you tell me how I'm supposed to manage this hybrid process with all these moving parts, getting kids here, getting them there, picking them up from there, getting them home, having one foot on my job and the other foot on being their teacher's assistant. It is completely, it, it's not even reasonable to expect parents to do this, um, this hybrid solution that you're, that you're proposing. So, um, please keep that in mind as you, as you go through these decisions. I don't think you're looking to make a decision tonight, which I think is a good thing at this point. Um, and then I'll close by saying, it's, um, it's pretty darn insulting to have to sit here tonight and listen to the same board member who literally made the motion at the last meeting to take away the in-person option. Come back a month later and say our kids are, are being damaged by not being in school when that's precisely the reason that so many parents in this district wanted to have the option. Because we recognize that the, the damage being done to our children far outweighed the risk of getting COVID. The damage of not being in their social circles, their damage of not building personal relationships with their teachers, the damage of not being able to see their friends and make new friends every day, that far outweighed any risk of getting COVID in many parents' minds. And to hear that same board member now come back a month later and act like he's part of the solution when he's part of the reason why we're here is incredibly insulting. Uh, and that, that's, that's, uh, that concludes my remarks.
All right, Ryan. Thank you for your comments. Um, back to you, Tim. Oh, yeah, people have their hands up, uh, Joseph Adams? Joe Adams?
The me are muted?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you, Joe. Go ahead.
All right, first of all, thanks for everybody. Um, definitely times that none of us ever wanted to be in. Um, but that being said, you know, we've got to look at every variable here. Um, and I'll go even step outside the box here. I've been working through this whole thing. I've had to worry about my family, um, with this pandemic, um, as a working officer and a first responder. That being said, I've taken every precaution at my house, just as if my kids know going into a store right now, they have to do that. Those are the rules that are set, and those are the rules that we are following. These kids that don't want to wear masks or whatever coming into the school, that shouldn't even be an option right now. You wear a mask or you don't go home. This is not up for debate. So moving into the face-to-face, this doesn't even make, because you're giving them an option. If you don't want to wear a mask, go, go home. It's as simple as that. What we have to worry about as parents now is that who's going to watch our children while we're here? Yes, school is not a daycare, but school is actually something that we send our children to while we go to work. That was never an option. We figured that out for daycare back when they were between, you know, firstborn and four years old. That being said is, I can't have my parents come down here because I can't risk them getting COVID because they are in the high, you know, over seventy class where I wouldn't feel right with them coming down here. So what do I do? Do I pay somebody to come in my house? I don't have that option right now. I can't find somebody. So there's all these variables and stuff. Meanwhile, I have a third grader that has to go to a specials class with Mandarin, and he can't even understand his English right now because he's trying to figure this out. Um, he has an attention deficit and he can't sit there and focus on a forty-minute video to learn math. Hell, I can't even work, learn math. This new math, I'm out. I'm good at math, but I'm completely confused. I had my fifth grader teach him today just because I was confused. Face-to-face is important. I understand the risks, but I also understand the whole plexus theme when we grew, when we go into this area and when we talk about this, it's, you know, we have to outweigh it. And then some have already mentioned H1N1. This comes up every few years with some type of pandemic. Yeah, we've never had this before, and I hope we never have this again. But that being said is, it is so important to get these children back on so many different levels because they're already behind. They already missed a quarter of their last year because nobody really learned last year because this was all new. We got to get these kids back in school for so many, or we're going to be behind of all these other districts that are actually in person right now. And my wife's a teacher. She's at one of, at Alvinak. They're in person. They're taking precautions. The kids are wearing masks. Yeah, it's not perfect, but so far it's working. And I think that's all you can do at this point. And if the people don't feel comfortable, they have that option. Thank you for everybody, everything you guys are doing. I know it sucks. I would not want to be in a position. I don't want to be a teacher, but definitely something to consider on the parents that, you know, don't have that option. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Lilian? Uh, Lilian?
You have to talk loud. People are waiting.
Hi. I want to go back to school, please. Um, I hate online school. I miss my teacher, my friends, my friends, and I don't want that. School, I do not like the computers. School is fun online is not, and greatly avoid for me to be at in school tonight.
What grade are you in?
I'm in second grade.
What school do you go to?
I go to Brad Oak Elementary.
Who's your second grade teacher?
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith is doing a good job. You did very good. Thanks for speaking to us tonight.
Thank you.
Probably bedtime, though. Uh, Mike Stone? Mike Stone. That there was a bell. Yeah.
Yes, hello.
Oh, hey, Mike Stone. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, go ahead, sir.
Okay, uh, is this question an answer or is it just more, uh, where I can kind of give you my opinion or?
Well, certainly, if you ask the question, I've got somebody readily available to answer it. I will attempt to do that.
Okay.
Certainly, I, I welcome your opinion as well.
Okay, I, well, I have a few questions that I, I would like to be answered. Uh, number one is, uh, I have a first grader and he's, uh, learning Mandarin, which I don't feel that's acceptable. Learning a communist language in first grade when you should be focused on learning English where we live in the United States of America. Do you, do you guys have any comments on that?
Uh, certainly, we've addressed the Mandarin, I believe it was last fall. Honestly, I'm drawing a blank because we talked about it, but the, the board has taken up the issue, I believe. And again, Mr. Woodside correctly, if I'm wrong, we made some changes at secondary level with Mandarin or I'm drawing a blank just the way that Mr. Burkhart. Either one of you remember, if you don't remember. Okay. Uh, you know, the board has taken that issue up with the Mandarin and certainly, uh, when it does come back up again, which it will likely in the next three months, uh, I will be sure to reference your comments, sir.
Thank you. Uh, and second of all, I, I mean, you guys, it's, you, you've had since March to, to, you know, you put this into recollection about in-school learning. And, I mean, everyone else has seemed to figure it out. I mean, Lance Cruz has every other school district. I mean, even colleges are going back. We're playing sports again. And that now, I, I, I know this is, you know, you guys have heard this over and over and over again, but it just, it kind of gets frustrating because I have three kids in school and it, I, I don't, I don't understand what you guys have been doing with your time there. You can't, you, you guys come up with all these bogus plans and then first of all, you said that we were going to have two options, then you changed it a week later. Now you're coming up with six options, like, Then you changed it a week later. Now you're coming up with six options. Like, what do you, what do you guys do? Like, it's crazy.
I will, I will add your comments again to our discussion. All the board members are hearing you. We are planning on moving forward next Wednesday with a vote that will determine what will happen sometime in the first week of October. So certainly, the board members are all present and hearing your comments.
Okay, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Jessica Elliott? Jessica Elliott?
Yep, I'm here. So first, I want to thank Angela Jarrow. I believe she said she was a freshman. It's nice to hear a student's perspective, especially an older student, and how it's affecting them. And then I'd also like to thank, I have three children. I have a preschooler, a second grader, and a fourth grader. My second and fourth grader, their teachers have done amazing jobs so far. You can definitely tell there is stress there. But it's a little disheartening as a parent. I work full-time. I work from home. I've always worked from home. I have a second grader that would see the literacy tutors at school, and he's not getting that right now. We on our own send him to private tutoring. There's only so much we can do as parents, so he needs extra time with the remote learning. We currently share a office, which has been pretty interesting. I'm on a team meeting and he's on a remote learning Zoom call. My fourth grader's pretty independent. But then I've got this poor preschool kid who has zero time from his mother because she's trying to work full-time. She's trying to help two kids in school. My second grader has been so excited about virtual learning, excuse me, because what kid wants to go to school in second grade? Let's be honest with you. He's a middle child. He has cried twice now since we've gone back to school this year. And not because anything's wrong. He loves being on there with his teachers. But this isn't healthy for kids. And he wants to be back in school. To have my kid that is totally against school, doesn't care about not playing football because there's no concession stands to want to do, play football and go back to school. These kids really need this time back. And then you hear SAC reopens. To me, that was a punch in the gut. So it's not safe for my kid to go to school. But if I pay the district, I can send my kid for daycare to watch them in the same buildings that my kid should be being taught in. I really, that really upset me and bothered me. I appreciate the options you guys have put out there tonight. Do I feel like six options are a lot of options? Yes. My only issue with the options is, it would have been nice if these options were being discussed with the administration and the board two months from now. I mean, we're two weeks in, and I just, that's why I appreciate that freshman talking. I really hope you guys understand the emotional effect this is having on children and teachers, because I feel like there's been a divide be put in between teachers and parents. With the flip-flop of going, you have the option of face-to-face and virtual, and then going fully virtual or remote. It kind of put the parents against the teachers, like it was their fault, where I feel it falls back on our administration and not being prepared. So I hope by next week you guys have a clear plan going forward on what is going to happen.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Andrew Smith?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Andrew Smith. I have a student that's in first grade at McConns Elementary. First and foremost, thank you for letting me jump on here a little bit tonight. I want to thank the teachers, the board, and the administration for their, for their hard work with putting all these options together and navigating these times. I speak to you hopefully with what I consider a rational train of thought. I know this isn't an ideal situation for anyone. What my concern is, you know, with all these options presented this evening is is number one, I don't feel like anything was clarified. I think it muddied everything up. Made it less clear for how we move forward with our kids. But please don't take that as a knock. I appreciate the effort in creating those, those options. Basically, what I get from it is that, you know, regardless of what options we put together and what ultimately you guys decide on, or we decide on as a community, I'm under the impression that there will be some form of virtual learning for our students, whether we choose it or whether it's a hybrid model. You know, obviously, that's to be determined. I just want to make it clear that I don't know if you guys are aware or not that there are parents within the district that live in a rural area. I am one of those parents. I do not have access to high-speed internet. The problem that I have with that is that, obviously, through the technology department, we were able to get a jetpack and a laptop for our students to be able to learn on. The jetpack has not worked since we picked it up. And this morning, the laptop crashed on us and was unable to perform anything. I think it's unfair to expect a seven-year-old to learn on a two-inch-by-three-inch cellphone screen, which is our only option at this point, until either those things work, or I personally go out and purchase those things, which I don't feel is acceptable. That's, that's a logistics side of things that can all be worked through. What I'm more concerned about is the mental health of our students. Not just my child, but all students. And especially those K through five. These hybrid models that you guys presented this morning, I don't understand how we expect a young child, let alone an older child, to navigate being in class one day, being at Grandma's house the next day, doing virtual, bouncing back and forth, trying to learn, and doing all these things, and we're expecting them to do that. They don't, in my opinion, they don't have the the tools and the mental capability to process that. You know, we're expecting them to sit in front of a computer and learn, and there's no real schedule. It may seem like a schedule on paper to us, but it's nothing but chaos for them. My last point that I want to make to you guys, again, with the mental health of our children is that up until this point, and it dawned on me this morning, my daughter has done nothing but show excitement for going to school. She used to skip down the driveway to catch the bus. She used to rant and rave about all the things that she's done in school, being able to meet new friends and learning, and she truly enjoyed it. Over the last couple of days, I've watched my daughter several times come to tears and say that she doesn't want to do the school. She doesn't want to do the virtual learning. Her sleeping patterns have changed. And as a parent, I'm concerned for her mental health. I, taking that a step further, I think every parent's situation is obviously quite different. I think we're a little bit same as a whole, but you know, everybody has a different, different situation based on their work schedules and everything. But I, I ask that if you guys truly think that virtual learning is working, to call some of our teachers and jump on session with them. This is not a knock on our teachers. Our first-grade teacher, Ms. Hunter, has done a phenomenal job. You can tell that she's overwhelmed. She does a great job with trying to keep these kids engaged and do as much as she can. But when a student on a camera is crying because she has no adult to help find the piece of paper that the class is working on, that's concerning to me. Originally, my mind went negative and said, well, that's a bad parent. But I think we also have to consider the fact that maybe some parents work nights. One parent's at work, well, one's normally sleeping. Well, guess what? Now they have to take care of a child and make sure that they can get them on on the sessions and learn everything. I don't mean to ramble, but I just can't stress enough that we need to put our kids back into face-to-face. I know there's challenges. I know there's unwanted consequences of all this. None of us signed up for this, and I understand that. But I think as a community, or I should say, I should say, I think as a school board and as administrators of Anchor Bay schools, we need to consider what our parents are going through from a work standpoint and how much pressure is then in turn put on us to continue to put food on the table, continue to make sure that we provide the best education that we can to our children, you know, and get through this hopefully temporary situation.
Andrew Smith, can I ask you to wrap up, please?
Yep, that's all I have. I appreciate the time. Again, I applaud all of the teachers and staff members and the administration, the board for fighting through this with us. But please try to listen and communicate a little bit better to us as the parents. That's all I can ask. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stephanie Richards?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for having this meeting now and not waiting till the revisit date in October. These meetings should have been done months ago and more frequently, but we can't change the past, so I'm happy to see we are moving in the right direction, changing the future. Second, what I was planning to say changed after watching the presentation. I am a hundred percent for getting our kids back to face-to-face learning as soon as possible, as the virtual learning is not working well for us. But these plans are clearly incomplete as it obviously is shown by all the questions you board members had to ask. Right now, teachers are struggling to teach virtually full-time. There is no way that any plan that requires them to teach both face-to-face and virtual will be effective, and as a result, the students and the learning will suffer even more than it is now. If teachers normally get roughly an hour of prep, but one of the options, you said they'll have three extra hours a week, that breaks down to just over thirty minutes a day, if they have five classes a day, that leaves six minutes per class for them to record their videos, answer questions, check work, and whatever else they must do for both their virtual students and their hybrid students that are at home that day. Sounds like a subpar education for our students or lots of overtime for our teachers. Can we afford that, or are we okay with a subpar education? You said that there were teachers that were part of building these plans. Can they speak to this? I'd like to hear their point of view and how they think they can teach effectively both. Next, you cannot ask parents to pick in a survey between virtual or face-to-face/hybrid without having the details. You have to pick a plan, then you have to have the details, and then you can send out a survey and ask us to pick. It is common sense that people need to know what the options consist of so they can make an educated decision. Lastly, how is it that our HR director does not know how many people she furloughed? Isn't that her job? Shouldn't she come to these meetings prepared? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Kyle Kappa?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
All right, great. First of all, I just want to say that despite the situation, I have two kids at South and at McCons. Mr. Nitterhouse is doing a fantastic job with my son in fifth grade there. You can tell that it's not his comfort zone, but he is, he's giving it his all. We truly appreciate that. And then at South, again, teachers, most of them are doing a great job. Again, there, you can tell there's some struggles there, but they're doing their best, and we're all working through it together. That being said, I'm here again to support, you know, back-to-face-to-face learning. And now you guys are kind of in a unique situation. You pointed out earlier that all of our neighboring districts have already gone face-to-face. Well, I would have liked us to do that as well. Now we can take advantage of that situation and find out what's working and what's not working for these other districts. Give a chance to take the best of the best from each of them and, you know, and potentially be better than them, you know, with a bit of a delay here. So I don't think it's unreasonable to ask our administrators here to to talk to these other districts between now and next week and come prepared to give the board with a full report of what's working and what's not working at New Haven, at Lance Cruz, and at Richmond, at Algonac, as you all used for your examples. And there's other districts you can reach out to beyond that. Armada is doing very well. They've been to school for two weeks now, longer than any other districts. And then Romeo as well. So pretty much everybody around us is back face-to-face. Anchor Bay is the unique situation here. So unfortunately, that we're behind now. But we can use this time again to maybe come back better than everybody else. So Alex, some other callers mentioned we chose Anchor Bay because we considered it to be our best choice in the area. And now, you know, here we sit while all the other school districts, we could have bought homes and are in face-to-face and and assumingly their children are now ahead of ours educationally as well. So we need to not only get back to face-to-face as soon as possible, but we need to figure out how to do it better than everybody else so that we can catch up. So again, that's all I got to say. Again, appreciate everybody's time. Appreciate all the hard work we're putting into this. Hopefully, we can get back to school as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Renee Baker? Renee Baker?
Good evening. So the first thing I have is, so I know there's been a lot of talk about 504 plans, IEPs. I did receive a letter, however, several communications between me and the high school. I haven't gotten any response back from anybody. So I would appreciate it if someone could get back to me about that for my child, for my daughter. Second of all, I'm hoping I like to see the options here that Mr. McDonald presented this evening with back-to-face-to-face learning for us. I would hope that the board this time around will make sure they review all the options and make the right decision in going back to face-to-face and not have a meeting, vote for it, and then two weeks later have a renewed meeting and say, no, we're not doing this. There's great options here that we've been presented this evening, and I would hope that we choose and we research them within this next week before you come back and have another meeting and make the correct decision for our children. It's very difficult, I have to say, again, agreeing with Mr. Powers. When you have two people working and you have two children at home learning on their own all day and checking in with them as much as you can to make sure they're doing what they're doing, they're supposed to be doing, it's very difficult. Very difficult. And also, again, tons of issues with the Chromebooks. When are we getting another shipment of them? The one I have keeps crashing. My daughter can't get on Zoom. The internet keeps dropping for it on there. So I don't have multiple devices in my home for my children to use. That's why we requested them. So again, I'd like to know when we're going to receive more computers so we can get them out to us to use if we choose to save virtual, and if we do these hybrid options, or you know, we're going to need that equipment to use. Thank you.
Superintendent Woodside, could you just give us a quick, if you've got the numbers in front of you with regard to the equipment that's being received? Yeah, I know we're getting more in, you know, we've been getting like every few weeks, you know, we ordered back in July, many of them, so they've been coming in every few weeks. I know, I don't have the exact number, but we have about two hundred more coming in this week or early next. And still, I believe, have about eighteen hundred out there that. So they're trickling in, unfortunately. We, obviously, with COVID going on and the demand on the computers, as all districts are ordering them, we're kind of piecing in. I apologize for having some frustrations. We've all had some frustrations with our kids and our Chromebooks, but as Superintendent Woodside referenced, they're they're coming in, they're just not fast enough for my liking either.
So I do want to say thank you for answering questions this evening. In the past board meetings I've attended, all I've gotten was, thank you for your comments and no questions answered. So I would like to thank you for at least answering questions tonight. I appreciate that.
And Superintendent, do we have her contact information? She needs a call back. I don't have her contact information. Are you comfortable spelling your last name for me?
She muted herself already.
Pitching? Okay. I have a name. Okay, all right. Yeah, for the high school to follow. Yes, yes. Okay. Tim?
Sarah R.
Yep, everyone can hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I'm the parent of a first-grade student, and we are a part of the smaller group of parents that feel more comfortable doing the remote learning for the time being. Honestly, my head spins listening to all the considerations that have to be taken into account when making the decisions. It's really tough hearing how much all of our families are going through right now. I do want to say thank you for the presentation of all the information tonight. Thank you for giving the community the time to consider these options, and I thank the board members who've raised so many great questions, because it really helps us out here understand everything better. I would like to hear from our teachers, and maybe they'll speak more at the next meeting. One question I have is, would we potentially be looking at 40 FMLA requests again? I don't know if, you know, I feel like that's a valid question to ask. This past week has been an adventure, but I'd like to say that I successfully completed my first Mandarin class, thanks to Ms. Fang, and Mrs. Blackburn has been wonderful as well. I would like to kindly ask, and I'm sure I speak for many other remote parents, when I ask that we not be considered an afterthought in this process, after face-to-face instruction starts in whatever capacity, while I hear you when you say that a remote option will be available regardless of the face-to-face option chosen by the district, based on what has been presented today, it very much appears to be an afterthought. At the very least, our elementary school students should have a teacher dedicated to remote instruction, not just a 2:00 to 3:00 PM slot at the end of their already long day. We are an out-of-district family, and I'm so thankful that my kids get to go here rather than one of the districts on the chart you showed earlier. And although it is contentious to say, I'm incredibly thankful that we all started virtually. I also feel like we're in much better company with the districts that chose to start virtually as opposed to the ones who started in person. We must take the needs of our working-class community into consideration, but I also implore the board to continue to prioritize and make decisions based on data and the advice of public health officials, so that safety is a priority. I'm not advocating for or against any particular plan, but shutting down suddenly like Port Huron won't help us in the long run either. As a sidebar, I just want to say that I've had the opportunity to watch my two sons, my young sons, become best friends over the past six months because of all the time they've had together, and that has been a really nice silver lining to the whole COVID situation. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you. Sarah B.
Hi. I'd like to start by saying that I think the majority of our teachers are doing a fantastic job with the hand that they have been dealt. They were thrown into virtual teaching just weeks before we were scheduled to start the school year without the perk of a late start, as most of our neighboring districts have given their teachers. As great as they are doing, there is just no comparison to in-person learning. There is not a better learning environment for young children than being in a classroom. Online will never amount to what these kids will get out of being in a classroom, and if any of you really feel that it is equal, you really shouldn't be on this board. I am not a working parent, so I want to address Facebook posts that I've seen where teachers indicate that parents just want free babysitting services. These comments are insulting and unprofessional, to say the least. I don't need a babysitter. I am a stay-at-home mom. I am a stay-at-home mom who now needs to find childcare for my baby while I tend to the needs of my seven-year-old, who should not be left alone on the internet unsupervised. I am a stay-at-home mom who wants my child in school because I value her education and not because I want or need a babysitter. Speaking of having a baby at home, how well do you think my seven-year-old is learning when she has a baby crying or yelling half of the day? Being at home is not an ideal learning environment for many families. Any of you are more than welcome to come and spend a weekday at my house with me and see what it was like for these young kids trying to learn while having young kids at home. I think many of you seem to forget what it's like having young children and babies in your own home. While many of you have extensive resumes to have a seat on our board, unless I'm mistaken, there's only one board member who actually has experience in a hospital system. Dr. Berkmeyer works in healthcare and has voted twice now for face-to-face learning. How can the rest of you vote to take away face-to-face without seriously listening to her opinions on this matter? When families were concerned about our Chinese students traveling to China over break, I received an email from our superintendent indicating we should not be concerned because they were not traveling to the epicenter in Wuhan. Well, with that logic, Chesterfield and New Baltimore are not the epicenter of McComb, so we should have no problem opening up safely now for these children. How is it safe for SAC to operate but not my elementary school student to be in her classroom? There seems to be a lot of blame going around right now between teachers, administration, the board, et cetera, and all of this arguing is being done at the expense of my child's education. It's time to step up and take action and stop placing the blame back and forth with whose responsibility is what. We now know how virtual works in case we have to go back, but let's get these kids face-to-face before they all get depression. These kids are really struggling, and nobody seems to care about what is truly best for them. I have a seven-year-old who used to adore school and now has negative feelings towards it, and it is absolutely heartbreaking to sit and watch. Many of you seem to forget that this virus was around for months before we even knew about it. Our children and teachers were in the classroom without being social-distanced, without masks on, and as far as I know, not one person from our district passed away from the virus back then. Even still, we now know better so we can do better. I have confidence that our district can put a plan in place to safely be back in the classroom for these young children. Thank you.
Thank you. Deanna Kay?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I would just like to talk about the fact that I have not heard many high school parents speak tonight, and I do have a sophomore who I would like to address the issues I'm having with online learning with him. As much as everybody's complimenting and praising all of the staff and the teachers, I have had nothing but the opposite happen. My son actually received a zero yesterday from a teacher because the picture of his homework was not in the correct position, according to her. It obviously rotated when, in the, you know, delivering process of from him to her. So she gave him a zero on a credit or no-credit assignment. When I confronted her, I had a very, very rude response from her, saying, had I checked Schoolology, I would know that it was already changed, which I find completely inappropriate. I have had another instance where my son tried to get onto a Zoom meeting, emailed the teacher stating that the link was not working, and did not receive a response for seven hours. That being said, last spring, when all of this started and everybody went virtual, neither of my children, both in the Honors Academy at the high school, had one Zoom meeting with a teacher. Not one. They never seen a teacher's face again, which I find for the Honors Academy completely inappropriate. These kids need to be back in school, and if we're going to choose to still do virtual, these teachers need to be held accountable, which I've already spoke with Mr. La Perrier on the first day of school, because I've had nothing but issues, and this was my fear with turning in homework via a picture. And before I contacted the teacher, I did speak with another teacher who told me that that can happen, and it's very easy to just reg rotate the picture. So I just, these kids, my son is a sophomore. He wanted to actually speak tonight, but he's not a very good public speaker. He wants to go back to school. He wants to be in class. He said he, he actually feels he is not getting a proper education, and that's the words of a sophomore. So I really hope that we can go back to school, because I do find it funny, being in the medical field myself, I have had plenty of Anchor Bay teachers, some of which I know are the ones that were trying to do the FMLA in my place of employment. So they wanted me to work for them, but they can't work for us parents. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Jacob?
Hi, thank you. Thanks for giving us all the opportunity to speak tonight. As a parent who works both in healthcare and mental health, I cannot stress the importance of getting the kids back to school. I've seen this play out at work time and time again currently with all the stressors both put on teachers, parents, and the children. But I actually wanted to focus on some of the gaps in tonight's presentation. You guys produced a lot of options tonight, and they were produced in two formats, elementary versus secondary, and they were presented separately. And so I have some concerns with that, because it almost gives the appearance that there's two separate votes to be had, or how are we trying to coordinate those two things? Because you're saying that secondary will have a, potentially a hybrid block option. Well, you don't have that same hybrid block option on the elementary side of the table. So how does that coordinate with the elementary options? It seems to me we could be running more than one program here, and for parents or families who may be using secondary education children to help stay at home and assist their elementary kids, I could foresee some gaps there. The other thing that I'm struggling with is that, you know, we're two weeks in, we're having this meeting, you guys called it early. That's well and great. I appreciate that. But I was really expecting to get on this meeting tonight and start talking logistics. How are we doing this? What are we doing in the buildings? What will it look like? What is a tentative start date if we opt to go back face-to-face? And I feel like we are nowhere near that, and that we've taken some steps back, and we're back on step one, when I was really expecting us to be as a district on step three. And so I guess, turning it back to you guys to kind of say, what is the thought process there? Because if we're not talking logistics and a start date now, I don't see how you guys are going to pull that off and do a parent's survey anytime before October.
So just a couple of quick responses to some of your concerns. I obviously lobby with administrations who have a meeting tonight. I know some of the board members up here through committee meetings certainly lobby to get together, get these presentations out, and get them out to the Anchor Bay community as a whole, parents, teachers, administrators, to us, everybody at the same time. I feel very confident that we will return in a week and probably through another multi-hour meeting, come to a consensus of which way we're going to be going, and that administration will be able to confidently deliver, you know, what was presented tonight. So I definitely appreciate your comments, but as you mentioned, we did have the meeting a week early, just so we could get out the plans to everybody. There are meetings taking place in the near future with the teachers, with the union representation, with administration, because the plans have just been rolled out to everybody today. So I am believing that we will have a plan by next week, and that we should be able to execute that in the first week of October. Thank you for your comments. That's it that I see right now. That's it? All right. If that's it, we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you, Tim, for your help on that. On item four, general business, ABA voluntary recognition of exclusive bargaining agent. I believe this is this going to be about Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes. Yeah, she can speak on its behalf, but, you know, the board has it in their back and has the explanation in our understanding of the voluntary recognition's exclusive bargaining agent.
I can read here, Superintendent, then we'll see if Ms. Gonzalez has anything to add. Okay. The Anchor Education Association voted to change their bargaining agent and are asking the district to sign an agreement recognizing such. ABA has brought to their members and voted. The district has conferred a legal counsel, and there are no concerns associated with this change. We are asking the board, we will decide the document recognizing the change in bargaining agent on their behalf. Did I get a motion for that? All right, how about a support? So motion by Moses, supported by Berkmeyer. Any discussion or any questions that Ms. Gonzalez or Mr. Woodside may answer for us?
It's just mean that Local One will be involved in all of bargaining or grievances or any of those union activities. I think the way you have in your board package, but I think, I think part of it is they wouldn't have to go to the MABO for approval of their contracts is part of my understanding. So when we negotiate a contract, it's just, I'm thinking it's just one less, you know, one less organization in route that they need to get approval from.
Right, they're still at Local One.
No, I understand that, but will the Local One representative be involved in grievances and negotiations, my question? Yeah, yes, I would imagine. We never asked that question, but... I just wonder why, over all these years, suddenly there's a change. I don't understand the change personally.
So this recognition actually has them ceasing representation by Local One and being represented exclusively by the Anchor Bay Education Association. They will still be a part of the sixth, I believe it's the Sixth Coordinating Council, so they will still be affiliated with MEA, but they won't be part of Local One, which, as Superintendent Woodside said, takes them out of the MABO, which is, which is another, it's just a, it's an internal organization, how they're structured. And so they're, what this is, is they're leaving the Local One, and they're going to be their sole representing unit, still represented by MEA, but ABA is recognizing themselves as the bargaining unit.
Any other issues? This is the first time I've ever heard a local district excluding Local One from their contract approvals. I just wonder if any other districts have done similar. I don't know if they have, but I know that, you know, it was brought to members, and you all, you know, we all agree, you know, on this change, we brought to members and the teachers agree.
Mr. Woodside, I noticed that Ms. Petron is online. Maybe she can answer Mr. Middlestat's questions or clarify on behalf of the teachers' union.
We do have a motion on the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I prefer to save your comments until the union...
That is fine. I just want to stress that this is an internal union matter and has nothing to do with the school board.
Thank you. Are there more comments?
I will, I will.
All right. Mr. Middlestat, want to go ahead and take the microphone, please?
Yes.
Yes, Moses, yes, Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Grue?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll say yes. Thank you. All right, thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item five, union communications. Ms. Petron, I think you're already unmuted, so if you have anything for us, I'll put you up first.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Petron?
I just want to explain that there are several layers or several entities that being part of the MEA, and there's, and it's, again, it's an internal union matter. We are still part of Local One. We are still part of the Sixth Coordinating Council. Our members have made the decision to not be part of the MABO, so it has nothing to do, again, with the Board of Education. Our members voted unanimously to have this happen. I've been asking for this to be taken care of and signed by the superintendent since July 13th. So again, this has nothing to do with the district at all.
All right. Do you have anything else for union communications?
I do not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Moving on, item six on the agenda is open, the second open forum public comment. Tim, do you have anybody on the list over there, sir? Dennis Richards? Dennis Richards, sir, you have the microphone. Dennis Richards, sir, you have the microphone.
Thank you, President Green. I'm sure by now most of us recognize the name Colleen Mellon. This is the same Colleen Mellon that the central administration spent 100 days steamrolling instead of working on a better plan to get our kids back to school. Look what was presented tonight. This is the same Colleen Mellon that has coached the high school cross-country team for the last 12 years. For those years, she received the Coach of the Year Award. The district has a posted position for a varsity girls' cross-country coach, the position that Colleen held for 12 years. Colleen did apply for this position, but wasn't offered the position. Coach Payne is current, is the current coach of the boys JV and varsity team and is overseeing the girls' team as well. I spoke with Jason Battle on Monday, September 14th, and he explained to me how you apply for open coaching positions, where they are posted in the hiring process. When I asked Jason how many people applied for the girls' coaching position, he stated, and I quote, "Not many, not many at all." When I asked, when I asked him about his thoughts of Colleen Mellon as a coach, he stated she had gone, she has done a great job with the program and was great with the girls. When I asked why they did not hire Colleen Mellon, he stated he could not share that information. Keep in mind, Mr. Battle recommends his choice and forwards his choice to the central administration to be approved or denied. And Mr. Battle told me he recommended Colleen Mellon to be hired. When is the central administration going to put what is best for our students and the community before their personal vendetta? Just for comparison, before the varsity football coach was hired, I heard parents and board members speak about the coach's career record over the past 22 years. 18 years at Dakota High School, 15 years of playoff appearances, and the effect he would have on the students. But Anchor Bay will not hire Colleen Mellon to coach the girls' varsity cross-country team. Lisa Burkmeyer at the last board meeting, I'm sorry, Lisa Burkmeyer referenced at the last board meeting, the poor internal communication and oversight issues that the Anchor Bay Administration Office has. These oversights were uncovered as a result of the outside investigation during the Colonel Carruthers ROTC scandal. Can we start investigating why unprofessional conduct continues within the central administration office? This type of retaliation does nothing but affect the students at our schools, the community, and drive outstanding and dedicated employees away from our district. Additionally, can someone from central administration tell me why we continue to hire supervisors and not coordinators for the open positions? For example, transportation and food services. The difference between a coordinator and a supervisor is about $20,000 per new hire in a district that is broke and in financial despair, according to the Director of Business and Finance. In closing, we have recognized that these issues for close to a year ago. When are we going to start correcting our problems? Thank you.
Mr. Sizemore, any additional hands up over there?
I don't see any, no.
All right, seeing no additional hands up. Why don't we move on to item seven, Anchor Bay Superintendent Commons?
Yes, well, it was good to hear all the parents input and stuff like that. So, or, once the board makes a decision, then we can move forward with planning, surveying parents, and who's going to be virtual. The idea of the options is just to give the board, you know, different scenarios we could do, but it also covered a lot of what many of the districts in the area are doing. So, once we, as Mr. Green said, we're meeting next week and at that time, we'll have a plan to, you know, move forward and plan for our students. One of the impacts that I know that I wanted to update the board on is our enrollment. Right now, we are, we figured probably about 100 students we can down, but we're down additional 300 students at this time. So that's part of the impact of the virtual. But it was, on, on the positive note, it was good to hear many of the parents, you know, the reason that they moved into this community was because of Anchor Bay schools. And some of the parents, as far as schools of choice, chose Anchor Bay schools. So I think that's an example of the, you know, great job the staff has done, you know, over the many years. So that was good to hear. Thank you.
Very good. Why don't we start with board comments? And I will go to our virtual, to virtual board members. Ms. Anderson, are you still with us this late hour?
Yes. Am I unmuted?
You are.
All right, I'm not going to belabor. It's been a long night for a lot of parents. And some of us get lengthy here at the end on these board comments. Are you still there? Hello?
Ms. Anderson, we cannot hear you. You're very muffled.
You're going in and out on your side as well. I, I really, I'm losing, you, maybe come back to me. I'll try to get a different mic going.
Why don't we skip to Mr. Wood and then we'll try to circle back to Ms. Anderson here to go.
Um, I just want to thank all the parents for their comments. I also want to assure them that we're going to try to make the best decision possible moving forward. We are one of 17 districts that did start for all virtually. And we, as we move forward, I personally want to feel confident that, yes, we have the procedures in place that are going to keep our kids as safe as possible. But I also understand the frustrations. I understand the challenges that virtual learning is posing for a lot of our students. So hopefully, at this time next week, any of our questions that arise in looking over these plans will be answered. And we will have a decision for the parents moving forward and hopefully in the best interest of all of our families.
Thank you. I agree with all of that. Let's see if we can circle back to Ms. Anderson.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it says unstable internet. So yes, I also live in one of those same areas of Macomb County that has issues with connection. So a lot of what Mrs. DeWitt, I'm not going to belabor and say it over again. I am a working two-parent household with two element, with elementary and middle school aged children. I feel the pain of every parent in this community. I feel the pain for our teachers. And I hope that we can put together the best plan to get our students back to school face to face as safely as possible. And I appreciate all the hard work and dedication. And I will strive to try to make this as simple as possible for everyone. And really do appreciate people's patience, flexibility, adaptability. And just please remember, we are listening to MDs and community experts, and we are trying to learn from districts around us. We are trying to make the best informed decision. And I appreciate everybody's input tonight. It, it does help create a full picture when taking things into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Burkmeyer?
I like the other ladies mentioned that, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments and speaking with us through this meeting. I know there's a lot of information that a lot of the community wants to have. I appreciate this format to kind of let this all digest with everybody and circle back. And hopefully, maybe be able to work out the things for a plan for elementary and secondary that will best, best suit our community. Other than that, you know, I, I have a lot of considering to do. Reading and looking back over these things, and I don't take anybody's comments lightly. And it does weigh on me, probably like a lot of the board members. So I just want to thank everybody for their participation because I think everybody's input matters.
Thank you. Mr. Moses?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for all the input. Got a lot to think about and hopefully we put this together next week.
Mr. Drew?
Well, like the other board members, I thank all the parents for their comments tonight. It's good to hear from the parents and the students that were on there. I thank the teachers for all they're doing right now to get thrown into the situation they were in the last, you know, couple of weeks. And I want to address the, the parent, and I heard it around there, you know. My family has heard it around there about my motion. I'm not sitting here tonight to try to say that I'm trying to be the solve, part of the solution. Just want the parents out there to realize this, you know, I hope you realize this is putting a lot of us in one of the hardest positions we've been in. None of us, as board members, would have thought this would have happened. If you go back to the original talk, when we were talking about the choice back then, every one of us were part of committee meetings when I was president. Every one of us were talking, there was no possible way that we could go back to school. We didn't think that. We didn't think we could go within the governor's guidelines. There was all this talk at the time that it's going to blow up, like I said earlier. And I asked Superintendent about those four school rounds that did go face to face. And what are they experiencing? Not how are they handling them, what are they experiencing? Are there a lot of cases? So, and then we chose to do the, the choice. We thought, we listened to the parents, we did. But then there was another faction, the teachers. It's not that they were lying. It's not that they thought they were hired babysitters. It was, they were concerned about their health and safety. And before that meeting, I get a phone call from quite a few teachers. And the FLMA request, they're concerned. So as a board member, you know, I can talk to any parent in the district. I can talk to different people. You, you can get all the ideas, all the facts. I, I can make an argument for both sides. At that point, I didn't think we were ready. I didn't think we were ready to open up. And if you don't, like I said earlier about these, whatever option we go with going forward, if we don't have buy-in from the teachers, buy-in from the administrators, and buy-in from the board, and everybody working together, it's never going to work. And that's what we got going on right now. And someone mentioned it, all the arguing up here, all the arguing amongst the board members, which everybody knows, that's what's contributing to a lot of this confusion, which way do we go? So I made that motion because I didn't think we were ready. And now, over the last couple of weeks, look around you. The Big Ten football just opened up. Colleges are opening up. Sports are opening up. Things are opening up. Stuff around here is getting better. It changed. And like I said earlier to Ms. Burkmeyer, it's easy to say, okay, what are your metrics? What are your things to come back? You know that's an unanswerable question. You, you can't. It's, it's what do you think is best for the students? What do you think is best to do at that time? Right now, I think, again, it's back to risk tolerance. My risk tolerance is down to where, as the parent said, you're hurting the kids more by keeping them out of school than putting them back in school. But I'm going to tell you, and I've always been a blunt guy up here, I'm not a politician who needs to move up the politician rates. I got a good job. But if we don't stop the bickering between us and the constant war on the superintendent to try to fire him, that's what's creating all this. I gave up the presidency, not because I didn't want it, not because I was scared of this hard time that was coming up, as you said last meeting. I gave it up because you wanted it. And because you had people calling me and saying you were angling for it. That's funny. I thought maybe, I know you don't care for them. I understand that. I thought maybe if you had to, if you were president and you worked with them, let's try to be adults about the situation. I've asked every board member. If they feel the superintendent needs to go, then let's be adults and let's sit down with them. We can have that conversation, but let's have that conversation after we fix what's, what we need to do for the kids and for the students here. Everybody's walking on eggshells. And if anybody, that, it's, I'm not calling anybody out as far as, as a board, I did some things I'm not happy with. But again, remember why we're on the board. I've heard from a lot of board members on here, more about, again, when I was president, maybe I failed, I thought maybe the reason I took it was I thought I could bring two sides together. I hope you knew better. I failed it, but it's because three people on this board want Superintendent gone. And if we want to have that conversation, let's have it. Well, let's have it above board and not try to embarrass them, which brings our district down even more. And that, that's, that's the part where, and when you got a parent saying all they're arguing is affecting the student, she's correct. And I get calls all the time about it. And when you listen to other board members go out and talk to other board members from other districts, and they hear about this. Especially since we started recording these meetings and everybody knows what's going on. So I don't want to belabor. I just want, let's all get together. And I said that in our finance committee meeting. I told you, I said, it's time. We just sit down. We figure out the best way. Everybody's, no one's going to win. It's a typical negotiation. Everybody's going to walk away like they feel like they didn't get some. But the teachers, the admin, the board, let's get the kids back in school somehow. And then we can take care of the other issues of this board and move forward. So thank you for listening to my rant, but it just, I, I'm not trying to put myself above anybody. I'm not trying to put a feather in my hat. It's not what I'm doing. I'm doing what I feel is right at the time the decisions are going to be made. Thank you.
Mr. Middlestat?
Similar comments about appreciating all the work being done, all the comments being made. I do want to make a comment regarding the parent with a child who's on the spectrum. And I believe we need to be able to serve those students. I've had a daughter who's also on a spectrum. And my only advice for parents are is be vigilant, be a children's advocate, but utilize your IEPs as your tool. Make sure that if you have any issues with, if you've got papers or anything else that you need to have extra time to do, make sure you include that in your IEP. And make sure you ask for your IEP because there's a timeline for them to react. So if you're not getting reaction by the administration or you're not being satisfied, you need to, you need to move forward. And I know the administration doesn't like me talking that way, but I, in the past, I've had the the advocates for my children, and you have to really be pressed to do that, whether it's with the ISD or whatever. So I think you just need to be vigilant and, and, and never take no for an answer. You just need to move forward with that. So that was my, that would be my only advice. And thanks, John, for your candidness. Thank you.
All right, well, I'll, I'll wrap up. I've got just a couple of small things to throw out here. First of all, I agree with most of what was said tonight in the board comments. I appreciate everyone and the efforts that we're putting forward. I only have two other things. I'm not going to get caught up into the whole discussion that Mr. Drew possibly might want to have at this point. Two things, one, we've been talking about the pool. And as we met with multiple committees, the truth about everybody, I believe consensus-wise, we opened the pool. Was it Friday? Monday?
I think it was Friday.
Friday? Obviously, the governor issued an EO that let us open the pool. Through multiple conversations with our staff, with the board, with our administration, we have decided to not open the pool to the general public at this point for the safety of our athletes that are, that are there, as well as the athletes that are coming in to visit. We are going to be restricted to use of the pool at this point only to our swimmers. And then hopefully, at some point in the near future, when we get back to swim classes that take place, we can get our, we can get our students back in there. But for the meantime, I know there's been a lot of questions about opening the pool for aerobics. And everything is closed at the pool. The weight room is closed, meeting rooms are closed. And again, we're just trying to keep our students safe, and that's our number one priority. Second, Friday Night Lights is, is something that I've always looked forward to since I was in high school. I went to a large Class A school that was on the verge of winning championships. And we've made an excellent hire in our coach. Unfortunately, COVID has taken away our ability to, to attend the game in person. So through our technology folks and support by the administration, we are going to be live streaming the football game this Friday. So I would encourage all of you to keep tabs on that, either through social media. So I would encourage all of you to keep tabs on that, either through social media, through our football or through our athletics. Find that link and, and gather with your folks and let's, let's, let's watch some football on Friday. With that, I'm going to wrap up my comments, it's been a long night, so I will solicit a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Moses.
Second.
Second invite, Burkhire, if you could call the roll, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
So I have two people that are virtual, I need to know that they're, they're voting.
Yes.
Ms. Bur, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Burkhire?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Accepted, you do the adjourn.